Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Emergency School Committee Business Meeting of November 5th, 2025. Reminded that the meeting is being recorded and streamed by WHCA. If everybody would please stand and join me for the pledge. Before we begin, I want to review our policy regarding public comment. Each commenter is limited to three minutes, up to a 15-minute total. Know that school committee members can't reply to your comment, okay? We only are here to listen because it could violate the open meeting laws. So we will be very careful about that. I hope that many of your questions will be answered tonight after presentations by Jeff and Brian Hyde. Remember that this is our business meeting and that the public can attend. Please refrain from yelling out and inappropriate behavior. And that is for everybody, including here. So we're going to, I'd like to start with the public comment. And we have Kevin and Cindy, you coming up together or separate? Okay.
Thank you for allowing us to address you tonight. My name is Kevin Kafka. I'm president of the Whitman Hansen Education Association. This is Cindy McGann, vice president of the WHA, and we have two comments to make. On Monday, November 3rd, the WHA held two separate votes of no confidence, one on Superintendent Simonak and the other on Assistant Superintendent Pharoah of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. The results show that an overwhelming majority of the Whitman Hansen Education Association has lost confidence in Superintendent Simonak and Assistant Superintendent Pharoah due to repeated failures in governance, lack of transparency, and irresponsible stewardship of district resources and finances. Despite the recent concerns raised by educators, families, and community members, the district leadership has failed to provide clear and consistent communication regarding the severity of the district's financial situation, made critical decisions that negatively impact staff and programs, creating prolonged uncertainty and hardship for employees, demonstrated a lack of collaborative engagement with the school committee and other key stakeholders, and also allowed fiscal mismanagement to jeopardize the stability of student learning environments and the well-being of staff. Our educators have been forced to operate under conditions that undermine morale, disrupt planning, and threaten the future of high-quality public education in Whitman Hansen. Therefore, we, the members of the Whitman Hansen Educational Association, formally declare a vote of no confidence in Superintendent Simonak and Assistant Superintendent Pharoah. We make this decision resultantly in defense of our students, our colleagues, and the community we proudly serve.
WHA remains deeply concerned about the ongoing budget uncertainty and the recent decision to delay any determination regarding a potential reduction in force until mid-December. While we understand the challenges the district is facing, this delay places significant emotional, financial, and professional strain on our educators and school staff. With each passing week, the deficit gets larger, and the number of reduction in force notices that will have to be given out on or around December 17th, one week before Christmas Eve, also increases. We are paying the price for the mistakes and oversights of this administration and this school committee. Our members continue to show up every day with dedication, compassion, and unwavering commitment to student success. In return, we feel we deserve transparency, timely communication, and respect. Prolonged uncertainty impacts morale. It disrupts planning and jeopardizes the stability our students so desperately depend on. WHA is requesting clear, consistent updates in conjunction with the community on the district's financial condition, a firm and reliable timeline for decision-making, a collaborative approach that ensures the voices of educators are represented in all discussions impacting personnel and student learning. And additionally, we ask that school committee make contact to both towns to request accessing funds to get through the remainder of the current school year. The finger-pointing and blame and disrespect between administration and the school committee needs to be put aside. As an association, we are committed to advocating for the security and well-being of our educators and the high-quality education our students deserve. We call on district leadership and school committee to move forward with responsibility, urgency, and true partnership to ensure a stable, supportive future for the Whitman Hansen community. One thing that seems to be forgotten is the children. Aren't they the reason we're all here tonight? Let that sink in as you move forward with tonight's meeting. In closing, WHA is formally requesting that the people in positions that will be potentially impacted by the impending layoffs and transfers be informed by the close of school Wednesday, November 12th, with the most up-to-date and accurate information. We're also asking that any additional impacts and layoffs be communicated on an ongoing basis with transparency to the members that are being affected. Thank you.
I came to this meeting with some-
Anna, please identify yourself and-
Oh, sure. Yeah. My name is Anna Horahan. I live at 100 West Street in Whitman. I came to this meeting tonight concerned that members of the committee would try to nullify or overturn the vote that you guys took last week. I was looking into the precedent legality of that vote, and my understanding is that the committee can use its budgetary oversight to review the budget, leading to the layoffs, as long as you're acting within your policy and budget role, not in a way that you're trying to micromanage personnel decisions. With that in mind, I think it's really important to note that the budget presented by central administration is not the same budget that you approved because there's a $1.4 million deficit. So the school committee has a legal obligation to be reviewing the budget as it is now today before moving forward as you would in any other budgetary period for the school committee. The second point I'd like to make publicly is that I don't see treasurer reports on the school committee meetings. I don't know if you guys still have a treasurer. We never hear what the financial situation is for the school district at every one of your meetings, and I don't understand why. And I think that if someone on your committee was committed to looking more closely at that on a regular basis, then you can provide that oversight to the district administration on a more regular basis and hopefully avoid shortfalls like this in the future. And like the WHA said at the end, this is impacting teachers who I love so dearly, but more importantly, this budget is for the children in our towns. And I think that I want to see the school committee exercising your right to ask more questions, hold more meetings, go through things line by line. Do not just trust what someone tells you. Look at the numbers. Look at the details. Take your time. Just be, you know, whether someone you think is trustworthy or not, you need to be doing your due diligence, looking at the budget going forward in a methodical way. And the district administration needs to be providing financial documentation in a way that is easily trackable and reportable. And we, as a town, as our towns, we deserve to be seeing that, and we deserve to be seeing all of you following through on your commitment to doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna, and thank you for your comments. Okay, the first thing that I would like to do, I would like to ask permission of the committee if they would combine the two FY '25 closures and FY '26 updates together because '25 runs into '26, and some of the things that we have to say have to do with both. So could I have, I just need your opinion if that is okay? Is anybody against doing that? Okay, hearing none, then I guess I'll say. So, and the superintendent would like to address everyone, please.
Thank you, Beth. Before we begin our presentation, Mr. Hyde and myself, I'd like to say a few words. The truth is, the situation we are in right now, the FY '25 deficit and the projected FY '26 shortfall didn't happen overnight. As your superintendent, I own my part in that. The situation is unprecedented and arises based on a number of factors. As I have said from the beginning as superintendent, the responsibility ultimately lies with me. Looking back how we got here, it is clear that I didn't make a close enough watch on our payroll in FY '25 or ensure that our staffing and salary projections were accurately aligned to the line items in the FY '26 budget. I also didn't communicate as clearly or as often as I should have about the financial realities we are facing. I should have been more proactive with this committee and our staff and with our community. I should have made sure everyone understood where we stood before it became a crisis. I didn't do that, and that's on me. I know this has caused real pain for our staff, who are facing an uncertainty and loss, for our families who are anxious, and for what this means for the children and our community, which deserves better communication and stewardship than what we've been provided or what you've been provided. I hear the anger and disappointment. I feel that. I became a superintendent to serve, to lead with honesty, integrity, and care for the people who make our schools what they are. And in this instance, I fell short of that standard. What I can promise is this: I will learn from it. I will communicate differently, more openly and consistently. We are already changing systems, putting new checks in place, and rebuilding the structures that ensure financial accuracy and accountability. We, as a district, are working proactively with the Department of Revenue and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to put our finances back on track. But most importantly, I'm committed to rebuilding trust, person by person, conversation by conversation. That's the only way forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Now, I'd like to read a statement of mine and declare some misinformation that's out there. I want to be completely transparent. So on Friday morning at 10:45, I received a call from MASCE, and that is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They informed me that the vote that this committee took, the motion and the vote the school committee took was not legal. We have no, they told me that we have no control over the RIFs and what the superintendent does. The superintendent has not tried to increase or decrease the budget as was spoken. The budget really did not change. The financial part changed. The budget is the same. The budget is what's voted on by the folks on the committee and by the towns. That did not change. We need to fit into that budget, and that's the issue. So the superintendent has the authority to make sure that the budget doesn't go over the allotted amount, and that's the problem. Okay? I was told that this needed to be rescinded right away, but to check with our attorney to make sure that he agrees. Since it was Friday, I immediately put a call into the attorney. He asked for the motion and said that he would get back to me. On Monday, about 4:30 or so, I received his response. Tuesday morning, I called MASCE back to make sure how to send the information to my fellow school committee members because I didn't want to do anything outside the law. So I didn't want to violate any open meeting laws, and here is his reply, and I will read it to you. I'm condensing a little bit. It says, "MAS General Laws, Chapter 71 broadly establishes separate branches of government for the school committee and superintendent. The school committee is responsible for educational policy and approval of school budget." For our General Laws, I'm on page 71, paragraph 34, 37. The superintendent is responsible for the overall management of day-to-day operations of schools in a manner consistent with the education policy and budget of the school committee. General Laws, Chapter 71, paragraph 59. With respect to staffing, the school committee possesses some level of appointment authority over certain positions. But in this case, the school committee has set its school budget for fiscal 2026. Unless the superintendent is attempting to shift funds from one budget line to another or seeking otherwise to change the budget, which would require authorization from school committee, the superintendent alone possesses the authority to manage school personnel within the appropriated budget passed by the school committee. See General Laws, Chapter 71, paragraph 42. Nothing shall affect the right of the superintendent to lay off teachers pursuant to reductions in force or reorganization resulting from declining enrollment or budgetary reasons. My understanding of the RIF put forth by the superintendent is in an attempt to manage school staffing consistent with the appropriated budget passed by the school committee rather than an attempt to shift budget line items or otherwise change the budget. Therefore, in my opinion, the decision of whether to implement the instant RIF falls slowly within the authority of the superintendent. By extension, my opinion is the school committee's recent vote to direct the superintendent to suspend RIF exceeded its authority. To remedy this, I recommend the committee move to rescind its vote at its next meeting. According to Robert's Rules of Water, the motion to rescind requires a simple majority if it's included in the agenda, which it was not. So we need to have a two-thirds vote to rescind, and it needs to rescind from Thursday. Now, I was also asked about, excuse me, I have to look at my phone here for a minute, whether I had the right on my own as chair to contact the lawyer. So I received a response from the lawyer, and he said, "As chair of the school committee, you have the authority to confer with legal counsel and seek opinions from legal counsel. You are not making policy, as only school committee can vote to rescind a motion. You can, however, seek an opinion as to the legality of a prior school committee vote." And as it was noted, I did not make the first call. I was called by MASCE because, as we know, everybody was watching. Everybody saw the news, and they did, as Jeff said, the DOR and DESI. So, but I did what I thought I needed to do right away. This is disappointing to the members because this is not how we voted. However, hearing from Kevin and Cindy today, they're not really pleased with the December date either. But I just wanted to explain how we got there. So I would, I need a motion from the committee on the rescinding of the vote.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, well, then I guess we're under illegal law. I will have to say, though, that because it is illegal what was done, that the superintendent is bound by his laws to do what he deems necessary to fulfill the budget and to make sure the budget is whole. So please understand that, okay? Yes, Rosemary?
The section of this is the semantics. The semantics is directing the superintendent. We cannot direct the superintendent to do anything, but we do have control over oversight and to make sure that this budget is handled correctly. So what we can do to ensure that we are completely compliant with the law is to, and still give us time to do our due diligence and to ensure that no, that we have done everything to ensure that all employment laws are covered and handled, is reword this. So let me, let me quickly review what I have. Hold on. Thank you, Chris.
Go ahead. Point of order, go ahead.
Can, is it okay, according to Robert's Rules, if Ms. Hill rewords it without us first rescinding the initial? Are we, I don't know what the protocol would be.
No, because we already have an order there, so.
It's called a reviewed motion for record clarification. Thank you.
Okay.
So it's more clarification. And I hope that the committee accepts this, that the word directing the superintendent isn't directing him not to make cuts, it's directing, so that we can review and do the due diligence that was needed to ensure that we are meeting and complying with the law and know our budget.
Okay, but just remember that we cannot control personnel. So the due diligence should be brought upon to the administration.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. The school committee votes to temporarily pause implementation of any reduction of force action for a period of 30 school days to allow for the committee to review a budget alignment, contractual obligations, and policy compliance under Massachusetts 7116B 37 and 38. This action is not intended to interfere with the superintendent's operations or authority under Massachusetts 7159, but to fulfill the committee's fiduciary and statutory duties to ensure that all expenditures and personnel actions are consistent, sorry, and I can't Are consistent with the budget lawfully adopted under 16B and current incumbences. Thank you.
I have a question because of, I have to get my thoughts together here. You, we're not talking about expenditures at this time, though. We're just talking about payroll. So then if you're going to, and the superintendent has not talked about moving from expenditures to payroll or anything, so I'm just, I'm just a little concerned about that.
Ultimately, it's a review. It's a review that, there's a review that say we made obligations under Unit A to meet, these are examples. Say we made obligations under Unit A to meet contracts, and then we turn around and say encumber amounts for unforeseen or upcoming things that we haven't even agreed to or voted for. It would be improper to then turn around and say we're going to relieve Unit A employees because of, say, encumbered money for, say, a superintendent's salary or for other people's salaries that we haven't even negotiated yet. So I'd like to review those things before we, say, move forward.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have more questions or a second? Sorry, Chris.
That's okay. I took my time. To clarify the point that we made, that Cara made a couple of minutes ago, are we able, and maybe this question is directed towards Rosemary, is this something we are just able to amend, or is this something that we have to vote to rescind the first motion before we can do the second one?
I'm questioning that also, Chris, myself.
I do think that when you reach out to counsel without coming to your committee, you reach out to counsel with misinformation, and you may represent the situation differently than what has occurred. And that is why it's best to come to your committee before reaching out to counsel.
Excuse me.
My suggestion is to reach out to counsel or have counsel at the next meeting.
I, I did not give him any specifics. I sent him a copy of the motion. That's what I sent. So I didn't misrepresent anything. I sent him the copy of the motion as it was recorded, and that's what he responded to. I did not misrepresent anything. I did not make the call. MASCE called me on what they watched and heard. So I'm, you know, yes, I mean, could we have counsel there too? But we don't want to get into the weeds. I want to take care of these people. I don't want to expend a lot of time on the weeds.
Point to clarification? Just point to clarify what you're saying. MSAC saw a legal, sorry, a vote taken by an entire committee of recommending board and contacted you.
Yes, they did. At 10:45.
This is a recommended, a, 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 MSAC does not give legal advice, is not to give legal advice, contacted you personally and intervened in a business, a voted business. And you didn't wait to come back to the committee to ask for clarification or if we wanted to clarify. You went right to counsel, represented something in a way that said we were dictating to the superintendent, which I don't believe we were. We asked for a review. We have not, we have had opaque budgets. We don't even have line-by-line. The superintendent himself has just admitted he-
Point of order, can we get to the motion?
Thank you. Okay, Hillary?
I think that perhaps airing on the side of caution on all of these things might be in our best interest, since we're all here. My recommendation would be to rescind the motion from last Thursday, just to air on the side of caution, and then to take up the new motion, Rosemary, that you have. A question that I have, though, and maybe I missed it. What, and it's not written down, so probably, because I can't see it in front of me, what is the language of difference? I think you were saying that it appeared that the motion on Thursday was a directive to the superintendent, so this one is just a request of a review? Is that-
Yes, a positive review, that we are in compliance and doing our due diligence, which I think we owe this community.
So then I would make a motion to rescind the vote from Thursday?
Second?
All in favor of rescinding the vote from Thursday? Please raise your hands. Nine, one. And opposed? Okay, now we have Rosemary's motion on, and I need a second on that because we didn't have one. Stephanie, seconds. Thank you, Stephanie.
Essentially, it's semantics, and I apologize. We cannot direct the superintendent, but we can review that all things are in compliance and ensure that we are meeting our fiduciary obligation. We have just heard that things were done incorrectly and budgets were opaque. So I will reread the motion at the request. Is that okay?
Yes, you may, sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Teamwork. This is on my phone, so it's got blocked. Okay. The school committee votes to temporarily pause implementation of any reduction in force risk action for a period of, can we, can we adjust the time so that the 30 days is from the point, so how many days ago was it?
Oh, you want it from Thursday? So it's school days, so that would be four, four days?
Yeah. Twenty-six school days to allow for the committee to review, the review of budgetary alignment, contractual obligations, and policy compliance under Massachusetts 7116B 37, 38, and 38. The action is not intended to interfere with the superintendent's operation authority under Massachusetts 7159, but to fulfill the committee's fiduciary and statutory obligations to ensure that all expenditures and personnel actions are consistent with the budget's lawful, lawfully adopted under 16B and current, and current incumbences.
Okay. Oh, Cara, you have a question?
Thank you, Rosemary, for the clarification. I think I'm wrestling a bit with it.
I think I'm wrestling a bit with it. Oh, I thought we had a second. Okay. I, I'm wrestling a little bit with it. I think the verb that we use, we vote that the committee does whatever the vote is. Pause is, I think, what is in my, I would imagine what the lawyer would be looking more closely at, right? Within, what is within our authority as a committee versus what is within the administration's authority as district administration? And so I just, I'm, I don't, I'm still kind of chewing on it. I think that, like, in my mind, a pause still feels directive. I think maybe advise, recommend, request would feel maybe less, you know, directive in our responsibilities, not because I don't believe we should have this conversation. The second part of this that is weighing heavily on me is the voices of the educators and the WHA around this. And I don't, I'm not sure, none of this is good. I'm not sure it is in their best interest to drag out the personnel decisions. It is absolutely in everyone's best interest to get to the bottom of what happened here. And so those, I think, for me, are kind of where I'm wrestling. And I mean, I'm not really prepared to vote on this motion yet, so I'm hoping other people will have some discussion.
Glenn, did you have?
Okay. Just for clarification. So despite the language of this vote or the outcome of this vote, we have no authority or power to prevent administration from doing whatever it is they're going to do. So this is for show. We're going to do this vote for show. That's right. We can't stop it. Not that, he wants to do it.
According to the law.
Jeff, I know you don't want it to.
According to the law, yes. We don't have it. Right?
I agree with what Glenn said, but I think us having something on the record that's, that is, and I think Cara's point to the word like request or advise would be, because I think what we want as a committee is time to be able, and I think the superintendent has also indicated, to maybe look at other avenues to close this gap other than the one that was suggested on the 24th of October. And so I, while it sounds like it's, it does sound like it's just for show, I also think it's important that we voice what we think the superintendent should do, not to direct him to do it, but to let, let him know through our vote how we, how we would like him to proceed. And again, like Cara said, I hear what the representatives from the union have, have said about the length of this. So if, I don't know how binding, obviously, it's not binding at all. But I don't know if there's a way to, to reword the motion in such a way that we are advising, but in the event that, let's say that we were able to find, let's say that they shook the couch cushions and they found this money, that they could, that they don't have to wait the 30 days, right? If, if there's a solution that comes forward. I, I worry about, again, like I said, it doesn't seem like we have any binding authority to stop these, the superintendent from making these personnel decisions. But I do think having a vote that says that we are, we are asking that he take time to explore other avenues before issuing the reduction in force is an important thing for us to communicate to him through a vote.
Okay, Hillary?
I think everybody knows what I do for a living. And I am very torn with this. I, I think Thursday, last week, we had zero information, and it seemed the most appropriate thing to do, both because we didn't have information and it sort of seemed like a knee-jerk reaction. My concern right now is echoing what leadership said. We've got teachers in classrooms. We've got staff in school buildings who don't know if they are on the list to be riffed. So while we're expecting them to show up every day and put on a face, because that's what we expect teachers to do, for good or for bad, we don't know, they don't know. If we stick with this 30-day timeline, teachers will get riff notifications the night before they go for holiday break. That, to me, would be soul-crushing and horrifying. This whole thing is soul-crushing and horrifying. I mean, I'm not, I'm not picking something that's worse than the other because it's all terrible. I, I think, I, that is the part that's hard for me right now. I, I don't want this to be the solution. I would like more answers, but I think we need to look at the 30-day timeline. We heard from leadership, the WHA leadership, that the uncertainty is causing more stress than it needs to cause. We also don't have answers about if we prolong this, does this mean more staff? Because of the answers that might be waiting for us. Those are uncertain things that I think need to be considered with this motion.
Stephanie?
According to the Whitman Hansen School Committee Policy Manual, first of all, the Whitman Hansen School Committee supports an inclusive environment that makes all decisions in the best interest of students. Another point, it is the committee's intent to activate a sufficient number of positions to accomplish the school system's goals and objectives and to provide for the equitable staffing of each school building. In order to maintain productive relationships with the community, the district is committed to sustaining effective, accurate, and meaningful communications that facilitate dialogue, encourage involvement in district programs, and create community advocacy for its public schools. And the school committee supports the right of the people to know about the programs and services of their schools and will make every effort to disseminate information. I feel like laying off teachers before we are doing any analysis ourselves of the budget. And again, I asked for us to get a line-by-line budget prior to the meeting. And I'm walking in with zero paperwork prior to the meeting other than the agenda. And I'm receiving a payroll budget line item, which does not give me the full picture of anything. I have no time to evaluate this. And I am not happy about the fact that I'm no, I'm not the only one who has asked for this. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we hear the presentation and that we hold off on making a decision regarding the motion until after the presentation has been taken, done. And I am going to say that I would not have voted to rescind the motion if this idea of, oh, well, maybe we're not going to do it anymore. That, that was not, the, the lead-up, that fellow committee members sounded like the intention was. So I'm just going to say, that's, that's a definite no for me. But I would like to make a motion that we hold off on voting. I, I am, I, okay. I am, I would like to recommend that we hear the presentation first.
Yes, Rosemary.
That's a good motion, but we can't have on the same floor. But essentially, we have a history of saying, I think 2019 shows us, that they said we didn't have money. We made firings, and then there was money. And we have a history that we need to really examine things a little closer before people lose their jobs. And I think that our superintendent, I think our superintendent. I think the superintendent is well-intended and with other lenses and the possibility outside-of-the-box thinking, going back to the towns to meet. If, if he did not put a budget together that truly reflected what we needed, then maybe going back to the towns or looking at other things is part of that.
Okay, let's stay with the motion, please. Oh, Chris?
Maybe more of a procedural question, but I agree with where Stephanie's coming from here. And I would ask, Rosemary, if you would be willing to table that motion until after the presentations and we've had a chance to discuss it.
I'd be happy to table it.
All right, fine. Then so with that, we have Brian Hyde, who is acting as our business manager, helping us try to get through this awful mess.
Second on the tabling of the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. All in favor? Okay, unanimous?
No problem. Oh, yeah, I got to hold it down. You get that from me? Thanks, boss. Okay, so good evening, School Committee Chair Stafford, members of the committee, Superintendent Simonak. As you know, my name is Brian Hyde. I work for a company called TMS, the Management Solution. I shared it with you back in October, that week, in about 40 districts. We go into school districts that are in often turmoil, sometimes crisis. Sometimes they just have, need some help in payroll or budgeting. So I've seen what you're going through, and I'm sorry sincerely. I'm an educator. I was a teacher for 25 years. I negotiated countless contracts for teachers. And then I went on the dark side, and I, I negotiated contracts for the school committee. So I have a memo I want to read to you, and I'm going to start now. But just so you all know, my role here is to close out 25, FY25, to manage FY26, to develop a budget for FY27, help out with the Whitman Middle School building project, make sure we get our reimbursements, and of course, the day-to-day operations in the business office. I've been here about a month. We came in late September, and every day it's, you know, we're just learning new things. So as of today, I'm going to report to you where we're at from my perspective. And I'll start with my preamble, which I believe in completely. The Whitman Hansen Regional School District's Business Office is committed to supporting continuous improvement, transparent communication, and fiscal responsibility, leading to student achievement and student success. No one up here is forgetting about students. That's why we're here. We are a unified team with the purpose of being a high-performing school district. And I hope that this meeting is one more step in that process. School budgeting, more than any other municipal budget, maybe even snow and ice, is an art and a science. It's messy. Now, I'm a left-brained person. Okay, I like things nice, neat, tidy packages with bows on them and square and everything's lined up. But as you're seeing now, school budgeting can be very, very messy. And we're in that process now of cleaning it up. There are constant shifting of needs and priorities. And we have to be flexible. We have to be patient. We have to be thoughtful and focused on the students, balanced with the values of the taxpayers of Whitman and Hansen. So Chair Stafford, I'm not sure if you want me to start with 25 and then move into 26, or just want to skip 25 for now and go right into 26?
No, I, I think the committee would like to hear about closing out 25.
So FY25, the fiscal year from June, excuse me, July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. So we closed out that fiscal year, and I reported to the committee and to the public and to the Whitman Hansen community that on October 8th, that the deficit at previous meetings had been addressed, and the district leadership team had a plan to close FY25 balanced by the following activities. We removed FY25 incumbences, which were money that were bills that were not paid in '25 that we could pay in '26. That was $82,562 incumbences, reducing the deficit. We corrected withholdings. That's money that the district pays for healthcare and retirement and 403Bs and pensions, et cetera. That was a savings of $372,888. We reclass expenses into two categories. One, building use, which was $111,414, and into circuit breaker, which was $767, I'm sorry, excuse me, $767,290 and $290. We had some refunds in expenditure lines. For examples, like overpayments and tuitions, refunds to the district, which added $38,467 to our deficit. And we utilized revenue overage, which was unexpected surplus revenue in FY25 totaling $778,433. There was a deficit correction, which worked the other direction for us, which was $33,212. But overall, on September 10th, there was a $1.9 million munis, munis listed in the, our financial software of a $1.9 million deficit. And by the time all these journal entries were made, classifications of expenditures were put into the appropriate places, we balanced the year at zero. So '25 is behind us. Now, '25 had a deficit. FY, I can only assume I was not here, but FY26 is often developed off of the FY27 budget. So therefore, now we're in FY26. I'm sorry, before I go to that, School Committee member TJ Rothie, and you're down here somewhere, I believe? Oh, down here, TJ. TJ sent me some great questions. He had asked what exact actions were taken to address the budget deficit that had been reported in September and erased by October. Now, no budget deficit was erased. Okay, it makes it sound like a pencil. Someone's like, oh, no more budget deficit. There was a budget deficit. It was addressed. And it was addressed legally and appropriately, like we do in many districts and we see in many districts. So what we did was, there was a $1.130, 680, and I'll have all this available if anybody wants it. It's just a memo that I write to the committee weekly. The $1.1 million deficit that we talked about, $565,000 of that was covered by excess general fund revenue that was over budget. Now, we had some, three big hits last year. One of them was employee retirement systems. We underbudgeted $242,312 for employee retirement. Insurance for active employees, the healthcare that people receive in this district, was underbudgeted by $127,836. This is in FY25 now, it was still last year. The short-term interest bond anticipation notes was $195,272.27. So I call those the big three. Those are three categories that were, there were heavy-duty deficits in the expenditures. And then the other $565,261 was appropriate special education expenses that were moved to, were charged to the general fund, which should have been charged to circuit breaker. And I'll talk about circuit break a little, a little while because people have some differing opinions of what circuit breaker actually is. But the budget was $1.13 million. The deficit was addressed by the following, the areas I just mentioned. So if anybody in the committee would like to have questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Cara, you have about, right now, about '25? Yes?
Brian, thank you. I actually had a couple of questions. I was unable to be at the September meeting, so I have obviously caught up since then, but I did have some follow-up questions. I know that a vote was taken by the committee at that point in time to use circuit breaker funds to close that gap. And then in October, as you had just kind of outlined, because you were able to move some money around, you were able to do that without using any circuit breaker money? Is that correct?
I'm sorry. We used circuit breaker.
How much?
Well, we, in, let me just make sure I'm correct here. $565,261 was moved from general fund, it was charged to the general fund, where it should have been charged to circuit breaker, and it did. It was.
Thank you. My second question, and I don't know if it's a question you have an answer to right now, but you had mentioned that you suspect that some of the reasons that we're in this situation for FY26 is because the FY26 budget was based upon FY25. And I'm just curious, and I don't want to jump ahead to FY26, but from what I'm, I've heard so far, which again, I have a lot of unanswered questions, is that we are focused specifically on the personnel line item. And so these big deficit categories that you mention in FY25 do not seem related to salaries. They're like other benefits, yes?
The 565, there's two 565s, which is interesting. One's 565, 418, and one's 565, 261. So it can be confusing. But half of the $1.1 million was not just, those were expense lines that were over, but there was certainly budget, excuse me. payroll deficits as well.
Do you have a number for what the payroll deficit was for FY twenty-five?
Um, I do not. In front of me, but I can certainly find that for you.
Go ahead. Chris?
All right, so we started out this presentation with a whole bunch of numbers that are not on this page. What's that?
He has-- he has them to get. That wasn't--
That's great, but it doesn't help us today.
I just read them into the record.
That's fine. This is a deficit situation and whatnot that has been going on, at a minimum, with knowledge from the administration and TMS, since October eighth, and still don't have a full accounting of what that deficit was. I understand that this is the one-point-one-three number and how that shakes out, and that's great. But again, when we had that meeting in September, we were handed a piece of paper as part of our meeting packet, which I have right here, that listed a projected balance in FY twenty-five circuit breaker of three-point-three-eight million, of which two million was budgeted into 2026, and was asked that one-point-one-one-four of that be used to zero out special education deficits that were-- that were in 2025. At the October meeting, there was some talk about 2025 being closed out, and everything's great. And we did that at zero, and that's awesome. And I believe at that time is when-- I don't remember if it was TJ or if it was Stephanie, who specifically asked-- at the last meeting, we were asked to transfer this money from circuit breaker to zero out that balance. And the answer was, "Oh, we didn't do that. We didn't have to do that." Okay. Now, we're being told that approximately half of that amount was used for it. I also-- and again, like Kara said, I don't want to jump too far ahead into 2026, but we're looking at some of these line items on the sheet that you have here that was supposedly a weekly memo that I've seen twice. So that's not exactly weekly. And we're talking about 2026's budget deficit being impacted by budget deficits in 2025. What I see in front of me over here is the payroll line item budget that are significantly out of whack, and none of those match up to the deficits that we have for the big three general fund issues over here. So I guess my question is, this is partial information here. And I feel like in the-- what is it now? Four weeks' time, since this became a thing, we haven't been able to put all that stuff on a piece of paper, and you were just able to do it tonight?
Is that a question?
Yes, yes, I think it is. Over the course of the past four weeks, where we've been tiptoeing and dancing around a one-point-one-four million-dollar deficit, we couldn't put numbers on a piece of paper that led us to this point. And we haven't gotten a satisfactory answer as to where those issues were. And now you're coming up with numbers that aren't on this piece of paper here. You're reading them off, and apparently those weren't ready to be shared on this piece of paper prior to tonight? I guess that's my question, is with four weeks, why do we not have financial data on what's going on here? We have partial data, and that's it.
Folks, please.
Okay.
Can we--
No, hold on. I guess my question then, Mr. Hyde, is how am I way off base?
I think what we need to do here is we need to go from the twenty-five to the twenty-six. What we have to remember was Mr. Hyde was not our business manager last year. So there's some things that we don't know what happened, because we don't have that person here, which is--
That's not my question, Beth. My question is--
No, I'm just saying. I know. Stop, please.
Beth, my question is, with the 2025 data-- I'm not even to 2026 yet. We haven't gotten there yet. My question is, with the 2025 data-- and I'm well aware that Mr. Hyde was not our business manager prior to a lot of this stuff happening. And while I don't blame him for the mistakes that led us to this point-- absolutely not, he had nothing to do with it-- I would like to know why, over the past four weeks, all we have is four little lines on this paper that don't reflect all the data that was just read to us prior to getting to that. Where are we at with that?
I'm all with Mary. A public standard of information is clear and definable for the public. It's not even clear and definable for your committee, Beth. I expect, and I'm asking, for the standard to be clear and definable for our committee and the public. So the question is, can you produce, in a reasonable amount of time by our next meeting, a clear and definable budget that we currently have, a clear and definable flow of circuit breaker money from 2025 into 2026, and a clear and definable reason which lines went over and how we went over? Thank you.
Okay. Brian, you want to continue with twenty-six?
I'd be happy to. I'm not sure what the question is. He's asking why it's on--
Can you produce it?
Can I rephrase my question then?
Yes, please. This is our meeting, not yours, remember? If, you know, if you stop, he's gonna ask-- he asks the question and do that.
My question is, this number has jumped all over the place from one-point-one-four to one-point-one-three. And all we have is the final number here that says these three, big three expenses are what needed to be adjusted in order to close. What I'm asking is, in addition to that, prior to getting to that, you read off several numbers from that piece of paper that are apparently handwritten or something you have that we don't. My question is, why do we not have that full accounting of what you're talking about here? And all we have is the final three lines of it? That's not transparent to me.
I was asked to-- by Mr. Rothie, what exact actions were taken. I responded publicly tonight and put on the record the exact numbers that were utilized. And if you'd like them in a different format, I would be more than happy to provide them for you. But I just read them into record.
Yes, Stephanie?
I'm just curious. Since the committee voted for the one-point-one million to be moved from circuit breaker, we never rescinded that motion? So shouldn't the fiscal year twenty-five have actually ended with a positive five-hundred-thousand-ish dollars, since not all of that was needed? So so that is-- so that money doesn't roll over immediately that goes into E and D? Is that-- I'm just trying to understand where that money went that we allocated as the people who control the budget, right? We allocated money to go into that fund. Where did it go instead?
I just need some clarification. What money was allocated into what fund?
I can help. I think that, Stephanie, we allocated to pay down for twenty-five, the one-point-one million from circuit breaker. If all of that wasn't used, what happened to the balance? Did it go for twenty-six?
Then it would stay in the circuit breaker account and be utilized in FY twenty-six.
Okay, it's gonna be used in FY twenty-six. Because we were taking it out of twenty-six, we put it back in.
Can I ask what that final number would be that is in circuit breaker for 2026? I know we're not at 2026.
I think he's gonna give that today. Do you have that, Brian? Okay.
I can dig it up. Would you like to take a recess and go do some research on circuit breaker right now?
I'd like you to continue with twenty-six, and then we can go back to see what other questions we need to look at.
Okay, so, Ms. Blackman, I did take notes, and you're requesting twenty-five and twenty-six circuit breaker amounts expended and current balance.
That would be a great start. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so we're gonna move to FY twenty-six. I also want to remind you that everyone did receive a line-by-line budget, an FY twenty-six budget, on October eighth. It was a September thirtieth budget to actual, which is from July one, 2025, through September thirtieth, 2025. That was provided to the committee. It's on the website, and it's available to all the public. That's our munis report for the FY twenty-six budget. I had also reported on October eighth, 2025, the following. I said, quote, "We are in the midst of extrapolating all payroll and reviewing and updating all expense encumbrances, helping fine-tune our FY twenty-six budget to determine next steps in FY twenty-six. We will address any known deficits and report action taken to you at your next meeting." That was our plan on October eighth. Since then, as you know, or before then, the taxpayers of Whitman and Hanson voted on an FY twenty-six revenue and expense budget of sixty-four million, five hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and five dollars, and for some reason, fifty-four cents. The superintendent cannot willingly spend more than that. Based on what I spoke at last time, the School Committee Policy, DBI, states that the superintendent shall not permit expenditures to exceed the major budget classification allowance against which the proposed expenditure is the proper charge. So basically, the town said, "Schools, you have sixty-four million dollars. That's how much your revenue is. That's how much your expenses are." And if I had a red and black ruler, I would show you that after the expenses were done, were much higher in this fiscal year than your revenue, by almost one-point-two-nine million. I think the number is all totally exactly in a moment. So as of October thirtieth, 2025, just last week, the FY twenty-six projected deficit. Now, this deficit, as of the time, they change daily. Sat since at one-thousand, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven sixty-two. On October thirtieth, the deficit was one million, three hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-three. So just in the past week, the deficit has gone up almost forty thousand dollars. And it's gonna continue to go rise. And as the WHEA has recommended, that we make these cuts if we have to make them now. And I know it's painful, and I'm sorry that you're in this situation, but we're trying to resolve it. If we wait till December tenth, you're talking ten-hundred-thousand-dollar teachers, which would save a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So the numbers keep increasing, incrementally increasing. The leadership team-- I'm sorry, excuse me-- so the deficit is going up about forty grand, times eighteen percent every single pay period. And those numbers are, they went up thirty-four thousand. This past week, they went up forty thousand. The next payroll will be another forty-seven thousand. The December payroll will be fifty-five thousand. So by December seventeenth, if we don't make any cuts by then, you're talking an additional-- let me be clear here-- a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in payroll deficit. That additional deficit, if you have a sixty-four thousand-dollar teacher-- that's probably first step, around the low-end step, because they're the ones that are gonna be out the door-- a sixty-four thousand-dollar teacher, after you get unemployment and compensation, you're talking saving seventeen thousand dollars. So you're talking ten sixty-four thousand-dollar teachers. Now, are there other ways you could cut in expenses? Sure, we're gonna look for those, but I don't see any. George Superintendent Farrow went through the budget. Can we please stop? Can you please stop yelling, please? This is-- I can wait. Listen, I'm here to help. Okay, please don't heckle me. I'm here to help. And I don't really appreciate being heckled at. It's just not cool. So if I may go back-- I have thick skin, too. You can heckle me if you want, when I'm outside here, but we have work to do. Our recommendation in early October was to immediately cut one million dollars, immediately, because there was a giant deficit. And if we don't start cutting now, we're gonna be closing a school in March. That's the reality here. So the bi-weekly payroll is about one-point-seven million. So every two weeks, the taxpayers of Whitman and Hanson pay one-point-seven million dollars in payroll. If we continue to push this down the road, those numbers will increase. And I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but that's unfortunately the position that I'm in. So the leadership decided to cut eight-hundred-and-eleven thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. A first step. And granted, the communication wasn't fabulous. I get it. And we're gonna improve that. We're gonna work on that. But at the end of the day, back on October eighth, it was eight-hundred-and-eleven, and it phased one of the cuts. So we would have no deficit on June thirtieth, 2026. The first cut entailed twenty-five union and non-union personnel, impacting thirty district positions. And you already heard this information. There were six from Unit A, there was thirteen from Unit D, there were six non-union contract employees, and there were five resignations or retirements. So thirty people were impacted, but twenty-five people were unfortunately pink-sloped. Now, the payroll continues. We are cognizant to place the well-being of the students as a fundamental value of all our decision-making. I'm a parent of eight. Okay, I'm a teacher, an administrator, a superintendent. I care about kids, and I care about people. I'm telling you right now that the well-being of the students was our number-one priority looking at these cuts. And the superintendent and assistant superintendents were empathetic and cognizant to make cuts far away from the classroom as possible. And there will be more. And hopefully, Superintendent Farrow, who has been outstanding, and I'm telling you right now, he's been very helpful to me, understanding this process. But if we don't do what we have to do, everything outside of student safety is gonna be on the table. So in addition to our payroll deficit, there are some expense-side deficits. And the ones that-- these big three, okay, GIC. This is not specific to Whitman and Hanson. GIC is our insurance across the Commonwealth. Every district in the Commonwealth got blindsided. Okay, we budgeted-- we, I mean, this community, we budgeted one million, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars for GIC. We get a bill from the Department of Revenue for two-point-two million dollars. That's six hundred grand. That, two-by-four on the side of the head, like, wow, okay? Ten-point-- I'm sorry, unemployment, three hundred thousand dollars under-budgeted. Circuit breaker? Special ed-- excuse me, not circuit breaker. Our special ed expenses are two hundred thousand dollars in the hole in FY twenty-six. So ties payroll, we have a bunch of expenses that we need to address. And we will. And we know it. We're gonna do it together. And I know that people are upset with the superintendent. I get it, okay? Blame the big guy. But we're gonna work on this together. This is a Whitman issue, this is a Hanson issue, this is a committee issue, this is a WHEA issue. We're all gonna work here together, and we're gonna solve this problem, and we're gonna come out stronger. I've seen it happen in districts, and we're gonna get through this. But the cuts are gonna be exponentially increased if we don't do something immediately. The remaining potential FY twenty-seven-- excuse me, the remaining potential FY twenty-six deficit will be reviewed monthly, continuously, daily, basically, as a review on anticipated revenue, use of unemployment, which is budgeted forty percent. So if someone gets riffed, and they go, "We pay them forty percent of their salary" until they find another job for a certain period of time. If they go find another job right away, we may have a savings yield, as the superintendent had said earlier. Healthcare that no longer utilizing may be a saving. So we're hoping-- the superintendent's issue was, he doesn't want to let people off and have a surplus at the end of the year. Right? And that's why he's been dragging his heels, because he wants to make sure people are taken care of, and we don't come back at the end of the year saying, "Oh, jeez, we got three hundred thousand-dollar surplus for E and D, but those poor people that were laid off." So we're trying to be cognizant of people. Okay, I care. We care about people. That's the most important thing. A recent freeze on nonessential spending. Assistant Superintendent Farrow went through all our expense lines. He seems to scrape up two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in expenses that can be frozen. That'll help. It's not gonna solve the problem, but it's certainly gonna help us. At this time, E and D-- At this time, E and D, I hear that a lot, E and D, use E and D. Not an option. E and D has not even been certified by DOR, and that's not gonna happen until February. And you're gonna need your E and D, because you have a building project for bond ratings for the building project. So I know there's a lot of misinformation, and a lot of anxiety, and again, I can't apologize, I'm just sorry going through this, I've been through this as an educator, it's not easy. But yesterday, we met with the high-ranking officials from the Department of Revenue and DESI. We met with Deborah Wagner, Anthony Rassius, Thomas Gorefile from the Department of Revenue. They called the superintendent and said, "I wanna have a meeting immediately. I saw what happened on the news, we're here to help, we wanna talk to you about this." And Jay Sullivan, who's the Associate Deputy, Associate Commissioner of District and School Finance by DESI. These people are brass down in Boston, and we met with them for over an hour, we're meeting with them again tomorrow, or Friday. They are in full support of the superintendent's efforts to balance FY 26, and they're able and willing to help. They were, and with all due respect to everybody, they were shocked that we pushed this off till October, till December. They said, "What are you doing? Do they understand the exponential increase in cuts you're gonna have to make?" And that's why we're here tonight, to let you know that we need to make them now. And I know it's painful, but it's gonna be a lot more painful in a month from now, or even two weeks from now. So that is FY 26, and I'd be happy to take questions from anybody on the committee.
Can we have these folks come to our next meeting, prepared, DOR, Jay, I know I met, a few others, and the DESI folks? I think they need to be here with us and with these fine folks out here, and there's no denying that. I will say that, I see Mr. Fourth, and how are you doing? I hope school went well, if you're still going good. He and I were on the Budget Subcommittee back a few years ago, and we were using that rubric or that matrix as a form of moving forward for the five years. And, you know, we weren't far off. So there is still a lot of numbers that need to be put out there on paper and explained. Thank you.
Ryan?
I just wanna clarify one thing. You said that the decisions were made to, for these reduction in forces, to keep them as far away from the classroom as possible, but I count 19 of the 25 being Unit A and Unit D, which does not seem, those are in the classroom, that you couldn't get anymore in the classroom than those. So I'm curious, and I feel like, I think there are questions about, you know, what other payroll items could be reduced before we go to 19 people who directly service children? I feel like that, there are, I don't want, I don't want anybody to lose their job. I'm a, at heart, a nice person. But I do think that, I think it's disingenuous to say that the decisions were made to keep as the layoffs as far away from classrooms as possible, when the vast majority of them, and I don't know who the non-union contract employees are that are labeled as six, but 19 out of 25 seems like a very, very large percentage to that. So in other words, I think what I would ask is maybe look harder, because I think that that, that just does not seem, those two statements seem incongruous to me. So thank you.
Kara?
Excuse me, would you like me to respond to the questions, or? Yeah, certainly, thank you. That is, I did, I probably misspoke, to refrain from classroom teachers. We, I don't think we touched any core elementary or secondary classroom teachers. I may be mistaken on that, but it's, we did try to stay away from disrupting students' classroom experience.
So, Ryan, just to answer your question, we have Unit A members who don't directly are in the classroom, they're in support roles across the district at different levels. Those positions are the ones that we were looking at first, not classroom teachers. However, in the Unit A contract, those folks have bumping rights. So trying to keep people out of classroom teacher as a riff, that person might be riffed because somebody whose position who is outside of a direct instruction is being eliminated. So we looked at everything outside of the classroom. We have a number of support personnel, trained educators, who are doing different things in support of students. So when Brian spoke classroom, not trying to pull out a classroom teacher. However, that classroom teacher might be replaced because of the seniority rights within Unit A.
And I just have just one quick follow-up, if I may. Paraprofessionals, I mean, they all do wonderful work, but I want it just to be very capitalistic for a second, they do so much work for so little money, it seems fiscally, it seems fiscally short-sighted to, like, if you're removing people, like, it's like when people, when boomers tell millennials to stop buying Starbucks to save for their house, that's not gonna make the difference, and they do so much work for such little money, it seems kind of fiscally irresponsible to put so much of the reductions on their backs. Because it's not saving us as much money as it was, because they don't make that much money, and they do so many things. We talked about, they're doing the substitution, they're substituting when teachers are out or when teachers are in meetings, right? Like, that is, you know, they're shifted around, they are doing, they are filling in to help out in terms of, you know, when you have sped students in the classroom, there's not always a sped teacher in there, the classroom teacher will sometimes work with the sped teacher, and the paras will work with the regular-ed kids in small groups. And it just seems like you're taking these people who do so many different roles for such little money, and by removing them, it just seems kind of like, just very, like, fiscally irresponsible, because we're getting a great deal out of them. And it just seems kind of, just very poor management to remove basically the most value, I mean, the greatest value we have from labor to payroll is paraprofessionals, because they do so many things for such little money. That's, we get the biggest bang of our buck from paraprofessionals. And I think that to eliminate 13 of them seems like, it does not seem fiscally sound, beyond the fact that it's not educationally sound, it's not fiscally sound to remove so many people that do so much labor, because that labor is now going to be moved to people who are better paid than them and have to be doing more things. So I just, I think that that's something that really, really needs to be looked at in terms of when we're looking at these reductions, that the Unit D professional, paraprofessionals that we have are, you know, the best value add we have as a district, and to remove them just seems very short-sighted.
Kara?
Just a minute.
Kara, just a second. So, again, Ryan, just to clarify, Unit D has multiple layers, not just paraprofessionals. They have duty aides, there are tutors in that, in that line item, and also a couple of our specialists in different areas. So it's not just the paraprofessional in the classroom. There are some reductions in paraprofessionals across the board in non-sped areas. We know that in special education, students have IEPs, and we have not disrupted those. We have many one-to-ones, and we have many support paraprofessionals in our sub-separate classrooms. They will, they will remain, but we have multiple Unit D members across, so it's not just paras. And I echo you, that they are, they're a backbone of our district as we've grown, and supported them in a contract last time that I think adequately or compensated them better than they had been in the past. But they're not just paraprofessionals in sub-separates. We have multiple Unit D members across the board, and that's the escalation of that number.
Kara?
Hearing Mr. Hyde talk about the compounding effect of delaying some of these decisions is really like a sucker punch, because the $40,000 you're talking about over five business days is people, it's not just dollars, it's people. And that, to me, is really scary, right? On the flip side, I'm also really struggling with kind of taking everything at face value right now. When I go back, and again, I know that you've inherited a lot of this, but when I go back to the business reports we got throughout FY 25, and I know that there was some complications where payroll is done through Harper's, but Munis is our system, I don't remember the specifics of that, but Q1, the January 15th, 2025 financial report said, "At this time, Q1 revenue projections are aligned with budget, Q1 expenditures are aligned with the budget." I look at February 25th, 2025, Q1 revenues, "At this time, revenue projections are aligned with budget, Q2 expenditures are aligned with the budget." May 7th, 2025, it references, "At this time, revenue projections are aligned with budget," and interestingly, oh, I'm sorry, it also says, "Expenditures are aligned with the budget." So those, you know, that, to me, is alarming, because that was the information, I, again, I can go through the Munis reports and I can work through things that look to me like red flags, but I also feel like the information that we've been given was that. Then when I look at the September meeting memo, which again, Mr. Hyde, I know you weren't at, and that memo did not come from you, it references the Business Department being aware of a $1.9 million deficit as early as March, and that that was anticipated, they'd be able to close that with other sources, and that did not happen. So that, to me, is really alarming. Further, when I look back through both my notes and your meeting memo from October 8th, the conversation around difficult staffing and budget conversations was related to FY 27, not FY 26. So in the FY 27 memo, you say, "The leadership team will be meet with principals and directors to review staffing and budget expectations for the next fiscal year. Difficult staffing conversations will take place as we try to right the ship while maintaining equity in our classrooms in FY 27." So needless to say, you know, when, again, when we say we were blindsided last week, when we suddenly were in this, were made aware of this giant hole, Mr. Hyde, where I am just struggling is, I want to believe you, I want to believe you as a professional, that you're saying that these, these monies are compounding the longer we wait. However, I am concerned historically about what processes and systems were in place or continue to be in place in our business office that are confirming the accuracy of your review, because clearly prior reviews missed enormous things. So I don't want to just take your word right now as one person. Is, has there been any sort of audit or outside review or additional eyes on this that have confirmed your analysis?
Thank you for that question, and I'll be doing my best to address it. In FY 26, this fiscal year, the taxpayers of Whitman and the taxpayers of Hanson, through the school committee, who had voted, appropriated $39.7 million for salaries. Okay, that was last year's budget that you probably approved in April, May, or June. So you approved a budget of $39.7 million for salaries. By looking at all the people that work in these schools and adding up all their salaries, they don't add up to $39.7, they add up to $41 million, which is a difference of $1.3 million. So for whatever reason, and I know people want heads to roll, and we'll go back and figure out how it happened, but right now, we have $39 million to pay everybody that works in these districts, in this district, but we have $41 million for the people. The numbers don't add. Your revenue does not match your expenses. So what do you do? We need to pay $39.7 million in salaries, or find alternate sources of revenue. And someone mentioned going back to the towns? God love you, good luck. I don't see that happening, but we can try it. But in the meantime, we have to do the fiduciary responsible thing, which is live within our means. If you make $100 this week, you can't go buy $102 in groceries, you only have $100. They gave us $39 million, $39.7 for salaries this year, we have $41 million of employees. Why that is, we can talk about, we'll talk about that probably later on in this meeting. But right now, that's the reality of where we're at.
Glenn, you had a question?
So the $39 million projected salaries, that was somebody's job to come up with that?
I'm sorry, 39 was budgeted, 39.7 was budgeted.
Yes, but where does that number come from?
Okay, so...
Somebody's job was to figure out what it should be, correct?
100%.
Do we know who that was?
I was not here, I didn't know.
I know you don't, but...
But we can talk about the budgeting process.
It would've been something that...
We have a fix to the problem. And we can, again, that's not my role to find out what happened before. All I know is moving forward, we have a plan, and I'm gonna share that plan with you in a few minutes, to make sure this does not happen, it cannot happen in the future.
You can't change the past, I understand that, but...
I'm sorry.
No, Stephanie?
I'm just trying to, did we take the yearly, annual salaries for all these people and add them up, or are we just basing this on the weekly, on the biweekly payroll?
Okay, so in front of you, you have a document that looks like this. Again, we'll share this with the public in the, I'm sorry? Yeah, there's no names. It's just all expense lines. But basically, I think your question was, I'm sorry, one more time.
So I guess my, the reason that I'm asking, if you are looking at, you know, you take all the people's names and all the people's salaries that they're going to make for the year, did we take that and add that up, and that's where we get the 41 million? Or are we taking the payroll accumulated and saying, "All right, we're gonna have this many more pay periods, and that's where we're coming up with 41 million?" And the reason that I'm asking is because part two of that is, I know there are stipends, I know there's longevity pay, I know there are some other things that maybe were figured in at the beginning of the year that might not be balanced out throughout the rest of the year. So if I worked for the district, which I do not work for the district, but if I worked for the district and I did something extra, maybe I'm getting a higher bump in my paycheck this week, and then the rest of the year, I don't get that. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out where the lines are coming from, if that makes sense.
It makes excellent sense, and you are correct, that's a budgeted amount, 39.7 is what has been appropriated by the communities. The projected salaries are based on our hoppers of our current employees.
I don't feel like that clarified it for me. I'm sorry.
Come on, come on.
So, did you take all the people who work for the district and add up what their annual salary is supposed to be, or did you say, "Week one, or payroll one was this, payroll two was this, payroll three was this, oop, we're on a bad course," like, and project out that payroll 52 or 26, or whatever it is, is going to put us over budget? Does that...
I'm a little fuzzy, but I think...
Hillary, my fellow English teacher understands me, so maybe that's the, maybe it's a language issue.
Hillary?
I think, I think, so like, if you, for example, a teacher with longevity pay, they're in my district, in my district, I think it's like our fourth paycheck. So that paycheck is gonna be percentage-wise higher. So if you were to go through payroll, and if you're doing it the month of September or October, and you're saying, "Pay period one, they made this, ooh, pay period two came in higher, oh no, that's how we're gonna go," but that's not actually accurate, because that's an off on the payroll? Is that what you're saying, Stephanie? But that's not my question, I'm just clarifying Stephanie's question.
We were cognizant of additional pay, class coverages, longevity, et cetera. We took the base salary of all the employees in the district, and they totaled $41 million, $41,4657.
Okay, then I have Hillary, and then you, Rosemary.
So my question, and again, as Stephanie said, I'm the English teacher, so trying to wrap my head around a lot of this, but in this document that we received from you, it says payroll lines, so in the future, payroll lines will be tied to individual employees. And then at the last meeting, Jeff also said that, we're going to tie payroll lines to individual employees. So I guess... So I guess, I don't understand how else you do payroll, if that's not how it's currently being done, which gives me pause about if this 41 million is actually incorrect, for good or for bad. So can you explain, either Jeff or Mr. Hyde, how payroll is currently done, if it's not done tied to individual employees?
Okay, so I have to ask a clarifying question. Would you say how payroll is being done? I'm not quite sure what that means.
Well, in this document, it says, you know, moving forward, our remedy, payroll lines will be tied to individual employees, so there will be no snafus next fiscal year. So my question is, if we are not, we, not me, I'm not doing payroll, if payroll is not currently tied to individual employees, how is it being done? And if it's not done in that way, how do we know that the, that these numbers are off? Is the 41 million actual? Is it higher? Is it lower? Do we have ghost employees? Like, what is happening? I mean, we know, and this is a concern that I have, we know, I've been on this committee for six years, and every year, we have cut and we have moved positions, and we have done all kinds of things to get creative, to support a budget. Is there a possibility, if our payroll lines are not tied to individual employees, is there a possibility that something got messed up somewhere and there's funds going out, I don't know where they'd be going, but is that a possibility? I don't need clapping, I want the question answered. Thank you.
That is not a possibility. Let me just review and go back. When we said the payroll lines will be tied to individual employees, that was in reference on the memo to FY27 budgeting process. That has nothing to do with the current situation we're in. Next year, and we've already started, thank you, Sha'leen Guzman and Michelle Lindberg and Assistant Superintendent Ferro, we've already started putting together lists of every single employee in this district, how much their salaries are, what GL, general ledger account number they're charged to. I don't know if that process was fulfilled creating the FY26 budget. I would probably bet that it wasn't, because that's why we have a million dollar deficit, 1.2 million dollar deficit in our payroll. So the current year, our payroll is tied to GLs. Next year, the budget will be tied to GLs, if that makes sense. Again, if I'm not clear, please ask me to clarify.
Rosemary?
I have a statement quickly, and then I have a question. Just that when we vote as a regional school, we don't vote line by line at the town level. We vote that one number for busing, I believe, and then we have the other one. So when we're saying, you're saying, in salary lines, we can transfer out of salary lines. And everyone was asking about employees that are contracted, or, and not contracted, we pay 40%, so it's not a real big deal when we fire an employee from salary, but we also have contracts from busing and for other things. Have we looked at those for cost savings, part of losing a teacher?
We are in the process now of reviewing major contracts, such as transportation, coffers, leases, things like that. At the end of the day, you have a contract with a vendor, you're a bus company, that contract has been budgeted, it's not going to come in less than what was budgeted, it may come in more with extra routes, et cetera, but it is certainly not savings in contracts because those are already locked in.
Rosemary, just, I know you, I know you better than this, but you just said it's not a big deal to fire employees.
It's a big deal, that's not what it said. I thank you for, thank you for that.
I just wanted to clarify, I've known you for a long time, you wouldn't say that.
I would never say that, like, that's so great, thank you if it came out the way. It is, it is, we don't get the benefit from firing, we'll pay 40% on anybody, if someone loses their job, we're still paying for unemployment. So it's not like you're getting that whole amount. So it, so thank you for correcting that, Jeff, but if we reduce contract, or if we don't continue with a contract, we really don't have, we have a real cost savings when we do that. So whether that be looking forward, because you're doing things going forward, not just now. And then, hold on a second, I'm not quite done. Additionally, encumbered in these numbers, do you have things that we haven't negotiated yet, projected out?
Yes.
You have, okay, you have things that we have not negotiated, signed, or agreed upon yet?
That's correct, we don't want to, we don't want to see a deficit later on, so we may estimate a yes.
Okay, can you give us a sense of the total number amount, or is that going to be a problem?
That's a problem since we haven't negotiated that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Kara?
I don't think my question was fully answered. Going back, I think, Mr. Hyde, so I had asked, you did give like a very good synthesized kind of budget, money that we have, and money that needs to go out for payroll. I understand that the difference between those two numbers represents a deficit. What I don't, still am not clear on is beyond you, and even TMS, has there been a second set of eyes that has reviewed these budget numbers from a financial perspective to confirm the accuracy of your evaluation? Because again, this is not me, I have no reason to second guess you, I barely know you, but we, given the history here, I hate to make really, really impactful decisions without really validating that these numbers are accurate.
Okay, all I can tell you is the process in place was we took payroll of everyone that works in the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, and we totaled the numbers, and they came to $41 million.
So Kara, I can just say, so we do have someone still working in the district that used to do our budgets, and he's verified this. He's still on contract, he's helping us out. So Brian's not working in a bubble, so he is doing that, and it's been verified. We have not looked at an outside source, but I think someone who has worked with us in the past, and we didn't have an issue prior to.
Yes, Chris.
To, sorry, to be fair, that person was here while these numbers that we're looking at that are 1 point something million dollars short. So to Kara's point, I would question whether, okay, great, he's been here throughout the process, well, part of that process brought us to this point here. And so I don't know that I would fully trust that either. We can come back to that, though. I have a question. Last week, I have a copy of the memo that was shared by TMS, I believe this was, this was the TMS memo from last week, correct? Yep. That you weren't here to talk about, and, you know, I get that. I want to read from last week's memo and this week's memo, two very similar sections, though not exactly the same. "We have decided to immediately cut $811,642 towards the goal of having no appropriation deficit on June 30th, 2026." That was from last week's memo. This week's memo says, we have, the leadership team has decided to cut payroll by $811,642 in Phase 1 toward the goal of having no appropriation deficit on June 30th, 2026. I was pretty good in math in school, I'm not a mathematician. $811,000 is not 1.43 million. Are we looking at doing this again? I mean, we're talking about 30 teachers right now to make up, I don't know, 60-ish percent of the deficit? Where are we thinking the other portion is going to come? What shoe falls to make that happen?
Well, I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but this is Phase 1. Okay, is, we have a 1.2 million dollar deficit, we cut $800,000 immediately to stop the bleeding, we, as a community, will determine what the best move forward is. I'm only giving you recommendations. I suggest, however, though, you get involved, the committee, the association, the leadership team, the selectmen, the finance committees, we all come together and see what we can do to do this, because we, at June 30th, we do not want to be in the situation we were in last June 30th. We want to get in shape and move forward the best we possibly can. But yes, this is Phase 1.
TJ?
Thank you. Looking at the State Department of Revenue website, there's a $346,374.87 overage in what the state budget cherry sheet calls for compared to our Munis budget. Where is that money accounted for?
I have no idea what you're talking about right now, but I'll look into it, and if you could just slow the question down, I'll write it down and find out the answer.
If you look at the state website, the cherry sheet for Chapter 70 and Chapter 71...
For FY26?
For FY26, cumulatively shows $346,374.87 above the numbers in our Munis budget. So if we've received $346,374.87 from the state, it's not accounted for anywhere in that budget, why is that not accounted for?
We'll look into that. You're reading our website right now?
Mass.gov.
Mass.gov, okay, so, so we're meeting with the DOR again on Friday, and I'd be happy to bring that to their attention. So this $346,000 that the DOR website says came to the Whitman-Hanson School District, and you're saying the $346,000 is not in our revenue line?
Correct, I'll send you.
Okay, so if they gave us $346,000 and it wasn't in our revenue line, then our budget will increase, or the communities did not appropriate the entire, the $346,000 for the school district, but...
No, so the Chapter 70 money in our budget is $25,929,471. On the State Department of, State website, it is $26,188,146. So where is that $248,000 or so?
Okay, we certainly look into that. My assumption is that this budget was passed prior to the state government, state budget was passed, and often in June, before the governor signs the budget, or anyone's in Ways and Means, then they make some final adjustments to the budget. I assume this budget was created, and again, I'm just assuming, it was created prior to the state finalizing their FY26 budget. But I will, I'll call the DOR, we'll talk to them Friday, and we'll figure it out.
All right, Hillary, go ahead.
Through you, Chair, to TJ, that's our Chapter 70 monies that you're talking about, correct?
Specifically, Chapter 70, charter school reimbursement, and the regional school transportation numbers, all came in higher in the signed state budget than what we've been working off in the Munis document, for a grand total of $346,374.87 in revenue that does not appear to be accounted for anywhere in this budget, as we're talking about cutting another 25 positions after we cut 20, 18 of which were classroom positions in the summer because of the failed overhead.
So that's great news, that we potentially have $346,000 to go towards the remainder deficit that we have now, and we'll work on it. That's good news.
Thank you, TJ, for doing that for free.
Go ahead, Hillary.
So I think if it's Chapter 70, it's already been absorbed, it's already in, we don't have to ask anybody for the money or go find it somewhere, it should be somewhere. So I would like to ask Jeff, or George, or Nicole, if they can tell us where that extra money is. It's our Chapter 70 money, it's like, it's not hidden somewhere, or it shouldn't be hidden somewhere. Where is it? Has it been accounted for? And if it has been accounted for, and if this deficit truly is a deficit, then that's more problematic, I think, than what we realize. If it hasn't been accounted for, then this is a reason why we need to review these numbers, a huge reason. This is a savings. So I would like, just to clarify, I would like to ask any of the leadership if they can speak to this question.
I can't at this point, but I will look into it.
Yeah, I think it's not fair to look at a website, find a number, and we don't know if that's actually real. But what we will do is utilizing revenue overage is how we've cleaned up FY25. If this is a revenue overage that was not appropriated by the committee, then this is, that's good news, and we'll look into it. But it doesn't mean we received it, it just says that it's on the website. But we will call the DOR, we're going to meet with them on Friday, and we'll ask that specific question. End of the questions for 26.
Stephanie, do you have a question?
First of all, thank you, TJ, who is not a business manager certified person, for figuring this out. Just an electrician, he says, we need electricians, so that's good. So I guess, are you just looking at the budget that the towns are giving us, and you're not figuring in this other money that you should be figuring in? Because, again, really concerned about the fact that you don't have this information. And I, I'm not judging, I'm just saying, I'm concerned about the fact that you don't seem to have a full picture either, and your first go-to was lay off staff. And, and I gotta, I've got to tell you, I come in, I spend the time looking at the warrants and all of this stuff, and I ask a million questions, which I'm sure the administration just adores me for, but, you know, it just seems so irresponsible. I get, it's an easy thing, we'll just, you know, cross off a line number, but that's not what it is. And it doesn't sound like you have all of the information right now, and that's really upsetting, knowing where we are as a district.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Rosemary.
Just quickly, I do agree that it should be reviewed, but I believe it comes in quarterly, so it might not be reported, and it's assumed before you start your budget, it would be in trouble. That being said, if we're going to lose money each time, as time goes on, why aren't we meeting more regularly? Like, we could meet every single day until then. There's no regulation saying that we can't meet more regularly.
No, I know, but I think people have jobs, Rosemary, I don't, you don't, you know, we're lucky.
Not at night, usually, not at night, not at night.
If we don't do our jobs, some of these people won't.
People are going to lose theirs.
I understand that.
And I don't think, I, I'm more than...
Chris, Chris, you weren't recognized. I would like to say something, one of my...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I have the floor, I have the floor. I was recognized, I have the floor. I made a statement, and I'm saying, it's free for us to meet. It doesn't cost anything for us to meet, it takes a little bit more obligation, it is not forever, and we can set aside time at night, when most people are not working, to get the information, because that's clearly what's not here, is all the information, and review it and make sure that we are in compliance and we're doing things correctly. Because honestly, there, there's a history here that says that if things haven't been done correctly in this district before, and there's a lot of questions. And I think that these meetings allow for the public to come in and ask those questions and be transparent, and we owe that, we have failed to be transparent, even to our own committee members.
And Rosemary, one of the suggestions I was going to make coming up is that we meet, stop meeting twice a month. That I think that's...
Twice a week, because, twice a week until, for the next couple of weeks.
Well, I mean, you know, going forward, we need to really look, and I have contacted our MASC to come and do a workshop for us this time on the budget. We've had a workshop back in September on our, what we're supposed to do, so I have contacted them either the first or the third week in December to start going over, because tonight, we're hoping to get to forming a budget subcommittee, and that we're going to have them come, and so that we all understand better what should be done and what we should be doing. So I think that will be helpful, too. Kara, you were next.
Brian, I know that you had said that in your conversations with the Department of Revenue, that you would anticipate the E and D to be certified closer to February. In those conversations, have you asked them, given the extenuating circumstances, if there is any ability to expedite that for the district?
To certify E and D, you first must need to return, review, return, certify your balance sheet, which has not yet been done. So we need to close out 25... So we need to close out '25, which we just did on paper. There's still some general issues to make. We told them that we would have a balance sheet into them by December. We'd have the end of the year report, but end by December. And February is common for E and D to be certified.
Can we expedite that balance sheet to get to them?
That's a possibility. I'd have to look into that.
We can ask on Friday.
What we have to remember too, Kara, is be careful of using that where we're going for bond, because we have no bond rating right now, so.
That's a fact. The E and D is trying to stay away from that, even using that in a conversation, because the DOR is watching, and they don't want you to use your D and D until it's certified. And we do need that certified for our bond rating. But I do want to respond to a question about, I came in recommending cutting staff. That is a mistruth, that is inaccurate 100%. I came in and said you need to cut a million dollars. Okay, I don't make decisions on what you cut, I just give information that there was a million dollar deficit in payroll. If we choose as a group to reduce payroll, so be it. But when you're in a district and your payroll is $40 million, and we're looking at 3% increases, we're talking another $1.3 million off the top next year before we even go into FY '26, '27. So it's time that we all have to just reflect on where we are and how we can solve the problem. And I know it gets easy to point to the new guy, I'm doing everything wrong, I'm just here to help. Okay, and so I really just wanted to say, I did not recommend cutting teachers or staff. I said you have to cut a million dollars.
Yes, Ryan?
Just to point a clarification, in the memo that you just gave us, it says, "Our recommendation in early October was to immediately cut $1 million from payroll." So I don't know, if you're saying that Kara is 100% inaccurate in that statement, you should look at the memo you gave us, because it says that your recommendation was to cut $1 million from payroll.
Now it is, 100%, now it is. Originally, it was a million dollars, and we looked at the budget, and where can you cut a million dollars? When staffing is 65% of your budget, there's no other place to turn. You're not going to get rid of buses, you're not going to shut off the lights, we're going to reduce electricity, I do see lights on a lot. We're going to reduce gas and fuel and shut windows and doors and et cetera. But you're talking small money. The only way you're going to get money out of a school district is in people, unfortunately.
Rosemary?
So when we're cutting, what sort of consideration to student services? And I want to be, I think, I'm going to echo, I think Hillary and I believe Kara have said, we have cut, cut, cut. We have the minimal of what we can service kids. And when I was up at DESI during the last board meeting, our school was listed, Whitman Middle particularly, as an endangered school for students, particularly kids with ESL. So I can't imagine that some of the cuts that I've heard proposed would help those kids, especially if we're, you know, if DESI's saying, hey, we've got a problem with this particular school, and we're here saying cut. So, you know, it isn't just look at this number, cross it out. And actually, it's our duty to ensure that it's, look at this child's needs or these children's needs and ensure that money gets there somehow. And the people that you're cutting are the ones that seem to be the ones giving those services.
Are you speaking to me?
That we're looking to cut our hands on.
I think she's making a general statement.
Thank you, I am. You're here, you're hired, you know, you don't have any personal desire to cut everybody, but you're looking at paperwork. I want to know, are you aware that we have a problem with Whitman Middle, that, you know, that we have students in need, serious need, enough to have reached the levels of being flagged by DESI? Are you aware of that when you're making the cuts?
I'm sorry, am I?
Now I am. Are you aware of that?
So is Brian Hyde aware of?
That Whitman Middle School is listed as one of the endangered, and maybe Jeff can talk about this, schools for the ESL.
You are correct in that. It will be addressed at our next school committee meeting as we go over MCAS and our accountability. We are aware. Brian doesn't make personnel choices, he makes recommendations on numbers. The leadership team makes decisions on personnel.
Okay, Hillary was next.
I just have a quick question. I want to go back to the discussion about E and D. In your conversations with DESI and DOR, is there a concern that our E and D may not be certified because of what is happening right now with our budget?
No.
Stephanie?
I am looking at the '26 original preliminary budget that we were given. One of the things that's listed in here is a summary of grants that we were on target to get. And if I'm looking at this correctly, it looks like it's $1.8-ish million that we're supposed to get. Is that money that is figured into your accounting of what our budget is? Or is, I just am trying to figure out. It sounds like we've got lots of different pockets where I will suppose we're getting money from, you know, Whitman, Hanson, you know, DESI, you know, the state, whatever. So I'm just curious, are the grants money that is put into that, you know, for things like professional salaries? And there are two lines that are professional salaries here. Other salaries, contracted services, supplies and materials, other expenses, MTRS. I'm not sure what MTRS is, but, uh, Math Teachers Retirement, okay. So all of these things, these lines that are grants, are those figured into your overall working budget that you're using to give us this information?
To me?
To whoever the person is who's taking the big numbers and putting them together and subtracting the other numbers. So if that's you, fine. If it's not you, then whoever it is.
Okay, so what big numbers and subtracting other numbers are we discussing now? The grants?
Brian, she's talking about the grant money that if it's added to this budget. And George, would you like to?
There has been $21,700 from Title I, which is a full-time staff, in a supplemental way. There are three schools in Title I, that's the Whitman Middle School, the College School, and the Ball School. All that other number that's projected, that's projected in those grants does not go to full-time salary people. Remember, Title I is only supplemental, you cannot supplant. So those schools need extra. So that's what that $321,000, those are full-time employees. Everything else leading up to that $1.87 or $1.89, if my memory serves, is for, like you said, professional development. Some of it from our 240 grant, which is a special ed grant. We took away in the last year, so now that goes to student tuitions. So some of that MTRS would be different in this year because we don't have as many people who are being funded in payroll by the grant. So $321,700, that might be off by like four bucks, is the amount of money that is going from this year's grant cycle at FY '26 that comes out of or offsets some of this payroll budgetary lines from the general budget.
And George, you seem to be the one that knows that information. Okay, because you have the Title I officer, got it. So is that figured into this budget shortage?
It's figured into, yes. That $321,000 is figured into how much we have to cut, how much we need to put toward it, and it's an extra piece that we all talked about, because those people then aren't paid from the deficit in the general budget lines. They're paid from a separate, so you take those people out when you do the payroll extrapolations. So for example, if me, Tom, and you are paid out of Title I, and when you run the budget report and the extrapolations like you're talking about in Harper's, which is our payroll system, you, they come out at the bottom, but the line, the account line that they're in is the one that goes to the grant, so it does not add into the rest of the overruns that are in payroll.
So the $41 million that we are paying is the overall payroll? Is, okay. It is with, it does not include those Title I? Okay. Want to be clear about all of this, and I would love to know where this other grant money goes.
Yeah, so two years ago, Mr. Sandberg put together every single account that exists in this district, every single encumbrance. I know, Brian, you talked about encumbrances from '25. I want to make sure my finger doesn't come off the button. But I don't know if there's any more that you can dig deeper into to see if monies that can wash back into the account, or sometimes they might have to wash back to the town or the community. And I certainly don't want to rob the food pantry or any one of these smaller accounts. That's not what I'm looking at, but there's a whole list of those accounts. I brought it up when we didn't get the override in the spring, and I made it mentioned to the previous business manager. Just want to make sure I make sure it's mentioned here. And lastly, I can help with snow plowing if I continue to be a fellowed federal employee, which I'm planning on until January of '29, so I can help out with that.
Just to clarify, you were asking about capital expenses that were not billed back to the town. Is that what he corrected, I believe? So that, so he sent the, or were not paid by the towns? And I guess we have the town administration.
Yeah, they were encumbered monies that were appropriated. Some of them have washed back, and they would wash back to the towns. But some of it was money that, you know, he put it up for claim, couldn't get it to claim. Yeah, Dave, I know you know what I'm talking about. And, you know, it ended up with us and so forth. But not robbing from any particular accounts. I just know that there's a whole bunch of different little accounts out there. Plus, I'm sure there's encumbrances if they're even from much prior fiscal years.
Those would be one-time monies, correct? They wouldn't be consistent. Okay.
Kara?
I just want to go back to this paper that you handed out, Brian, today with the highlighting on it. Just to get clarification a little bit, I'm trying to cross-reference this with our FY '26 preliminary budget, which was the budget that the towns voted down. So I know that it's, those line items have been revised, given our revised budget number since we initially received it. But I just want to understand the different columns. So if I took, for example, line item 2305, classroom teachers, you're looking at almost $19 million in a revised budget. That represents the budget that we certified as a committee post the failed override. Okay. Then the second column, year-to-date expended, I think I know what that means. Pay amount per period, I think I also know what that means. I'm a little bit confused, what's the difference between end-of-year projection and then total end-of-year projection? Because that's like a $4 million difference, and I'm not clear what the distinction is.
It's the end-of-year projection plus the expended is the total projection. Column two plus column four equals column five.
Okay. Gives us this, okay. You represented the expended already, where? Thank you. Well, we didn't vote for the nine. Yeah, okay. This is a special, so I'm kind of weighed out.
Thank you then. Brian, I know you said you were going to discuss Circuit Breaker in more detail. Can we do that now? Is that?
I'd be happy to. I just thought it would be good to educate everybody on Circuit Breaker. I don't want to bore people, but I think it's important that everyone understands what Circuit Breaker is.
So could we do, I have some questions about that, so I wanted to hear what you had to say first.
I'd be happy to. Well, it's in the memo. First of all, Circuit Breaker is a Department of Elementary and Secondary Education state reimbursement program. So what that basically means is provide, provides funding for school districts for a portion of the high costs they incur for educating severely disabled special education students. This reimbursement kicks in after a district's costs for a student exceeds a specific threshold, which is set by the state and recalculated annually. This year, the Circuit Breaker number is a foundation budget, the average state foundation budget, which is what the average student is, costs in Massachusetts, is $16,917. If one of our special education students requires services that is four times that amount, or $67,667, we are entitled to reimbursement up to 75% of that money. So what happens is the program helps districts with costs for services such as special education tuition, special education transportation, and interstate services for eligible students. So we have students in our program, and the eligibility threshold is triggered when a district's special education cost for a student surpasses a state-defined threshold, which again is four times the foundation budget. The reimbursement amount went fully funded. Now remember, it's an appropriation from the state. So the state law says, state, you will give districts 75% of the costs of those students that cost four times the thing. The state never, has never funded it. Six years ago, eight years ago, they started funding it fully at 75%. So they appropriate a billion dollars, whatever the number is, okay? And then all the school districts, like Whitman-Hanson and others, special ed people, in our case, it's Lisa Forbes, I think, organizes our numbers. We submit that to UMass, and then they submit it to Medicare. I'm sorry, not Medicare. I'm confusing Medicare and Circuit Breaker. They, twice a year, in March and in June, we submit all our special ed costs. That's why if you're a special educator out there, someone's on you saying how much you're spending on this child, what services is this child getting, you know, OTPT, speech, whatever. So the reimbursement fully funded, they give us 75% back of what we paid in a, over, four times over the amount of the foundation budget. The program covers a range of costs, qualified special education tuition, transportation, we just said that, private program tuition rates. And the claiming processes, there's two annual cycles. A year-end claim for the previous fiscal year, and an extraordinary relief claim for unexpected high-cost situations. Now that extraordinary relief is pretty good, because what happens is if you spend 125% more than you spent the previous fiscal year in special ed costs, the state has this program called extraordinary relief. We don't meet that threshold, or we don't appear to meet that threshold. We're going to work with our special ed people to see that, but our special ed costs are going through the roof. The district has 16.5% special education students, or about 575 special ed students in our district, which is about 16.5%, which is below the state average. So our students are not heavily special ed. We have the low income, 1,062 low-income students, and we have 219 ELL students. But in terms of special ed, if your students, if our students are very costly, at the end of the year, we submit all, it's a laborious, laborious activity. And God love the people that do it, it's all our special service providers. Our OTTs, PTs are always being asked, you know, what services are you providing? So we submit that to the state, and based on the appropriation, hopefully we get 75%. Just five or six years ago, they started including transportation, which is great, because our special ed transportation costs have gone through the roof. Our district tuitions, OSD, the Operations Services Division, they set the rates for our private school tuitions. They went up 14.86% in one year. Now, your budget didn't go up 14.86% costs, but our special ed tuitions went up 14.86%. Following year, they went up 6%. It was a 20... up six percent. It was a twenty-five percent increase in two years. Districts can't keep up with that. This district can't keep up with that. So the purpose is, the goal is to help offset significant financial burdens, to provide legally mandated special education services. The state says you have to provide speech, you have to provide a nurse, you have to provide whatever it might be, and they help us with those reimbursements. Again, it's an appropriation. It used to be sixty-two, sixty percent, but currently it's funded, fully funded at seventy-five percent, and transportation is included in that as well, as well, but only twenty-five percent of transportation is covered. So Circuit Breaker reimbursement for FY twenty-five expenses was two million four hundred and two thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars. So the Whitman Hansen Regional School District received two point four million dollars, or the GON received this year, two point four million dollars. Now, we use six hundred of that. Again, you have three years to spend the money. Services are provided, money comes in, the next fiscal year, you can expend it the following fiscal year. So it's really over, over two years, but it's a three-year process. So we're receiving two point four million. We use six hundred of that to close FY twenty-five. So we really only can play with one point eight million. We budgeted two million dollars. So our special ed department is in the hole, if you want to say a special ed department, one of our departments is in the hole, two hundred thousand dollars, which adds to the surplus, I mean, excuse me, not surplus, this deficit that we're facing right now. So again, the district used the five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to balance the twenty-five. We budgeted two million. We have a shortfall of about a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in our special ed department. That was a lot of information, and if you need me to slow it down or repeat anything, I'd be happy to do so. Yes, the chair.
Ryan, you asked, you asked for this, so you had additional questions.
Oh, yeah, I did. So I sent through the chair, a, the two towns had the Abrams Group do a audit of our school district, and I wanted to look specifically at the, their, their audit of our Circuit Breaker use, because I have a question, and I don't know if you got a chance to look at that document that I sent to the chair?
I did see it, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. So it, the document goes through, and it, it gives the money that we, we brought in from Circuit Breaker, and the money that is expended, and then the money that is pledged to next year's budget. And in twenty, FY twenty-five, now I think in the budget that, the document that I saw that Mr. Stamberg produced for the committee, I wasn't on the committee at the time, but what he produced for the committee, he said it was two point nine million dollars was put in FY twenty-five. This document says three million. I don't know if that's, I mean, what the differences, where the difference arises from that. But we didn't get two point nine million, so I, I'm curious. And then in the FY twenty-six budget, I did not see an accounting of what Circuit Breaker was pledged to FY twenty-six. And so I just, it, and because it says here, if you go through this document, and I apologize, I did, I did send it to the chair. It's not in our, the other members' packets, so I apologize for reading these numbers. But it looks like basically the ending balance that we, we have is pledged towards the next budget. But at the end of FY twenty-five, because we had put two point nine in FY twenty-five, we only had six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I'm curious, what was pledged for twenty-six from Circuit Breaker? And where did that extra, if, if we only had two point two million dollars from FY twenty-five revenue, how were we able to pledge three million or two point nine million, depending on which number you look at, to the FY twenty-five budget? And is that, how is that accounted for? I'm just, I'm not really sure.
Okay, that was a lot. No, no, that's good, that's good. I, I just, I want to be clear, I don't want to misspeak. So the documents that we received, you said, was from the towns audits from Abrams Group. Okay? And they went through our Circuit Breaker revenue and expenses over the past five years. I can't speak on where they got that information. I can't speak on what was spent in the past. But I, I can tell you that this fiscal year, FY twenty-six, we're receiving two point four million, point four oh two, based on reimbursement for last year's services provided. I don't know the six fifty, but again, I'd be happy to sit with you at any point and try to work it out together. But I, I don't know what happened in the past. I do know that the two point four million that we're receiving, we appropriated two million, but we only have one eight, one point eight left because we spent six hundred on FY twenty-five. So I'm sorry I didn't probably give you the answer you're looking for. But I'm happy to work with you anytime, or anybody, really. You can have my cellphone if you want to talk. I love talking to this stuff.
Stephen?
Yeah, I represent Whitman Hansen for Hulker area collaborative. We're meeting tomorrow night. It's our second meeting. I'm, I'm got a little tied up between our regular meeting for Whitman Hansen and a few other things going on. So I wasn't able to report in October. I will in November. But it looks like after our audit was just completed for the, for PAC, is that we have roughly, I don't want to say the exact number because it hasn't been voted yet, but it's between fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifteen thousand and one dollars coming back to the district.
Thank you, Stephen.
Well, good news.
Chris?
I think this question is actually for Jeff. Going back again to the, the document from September's meeting, I believe it was September fourth is the date of it. It says the FY twenty-five Circuit Breaker reimbursement projected awaiting certification was three point three eight two seven five two. So looking at this document here with the reimbursement being two point four, where, where did that million-dollar difference come from?
That document was inaccurate. It was, it was, I, I believe, I can only speak for what was written from that person. That was what we were anticipating submitting, not the reimbursable. Can, can I just add something before I forget, too? Because this came up about alternatives, and I, looking at my, the select boards over there, if the committee authorizes me to have a conversation with both boards of, the select board chairs prior to our next meeting, if they would entertain looking at our deficit. I don't want to do that unilaterally, but it was brought up at this table, and I would just like a, a head nod for me to do that. I don't know if they would entertain that conversation, but I would send a memo to both select board chairs and their boards to discuss where we are now as, as an ulterior option. However, I am looking at the time and people leaving, and I don't want to lose my train of thought.
Stephanie, you responding to this?
I would, I would like to make a, 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 yes, I'm on board with you going and talking to people and knocking on doors to see if they can carve up some of that money they just talked in their back pockets. Make a motion.
Yeah, motion's better.
All right, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you. I'll, I'll draft that. I'll CC you. And if I get a response, I will, I know I'll get a response, but I'll keep you informed during that conversation.
Kara?
Thank you, Jeff, for pursuing that. And I think, you know, we need to approach it from a spirit of, we are in a very serious predicament, and as I've always said, I think that it's critical that there is collaboration throughout the year, not just in times of crisis, but throughout the year between our town boards and this committee. So I think that's really important, and I think it needs to be in the spirit of collaboration and problem-solving and not finger-pointing. I want to go back, I'm just checking a number again here, Brian, on this report. So again, and I'm, I'm honed in, I think, on line item twenty-three oh five, because it is such a big part of this deficit. This is the one point four million overage, it looks like. Am I correct? Okay.
Yes.
When I look at our original budget proposal for FY twenty-six proposed, and again, this was the budget that was voted down by the towns, that total salary line item under twenty-three oh five, the proposal was nineteen million eight hundred and sixty thousand ninety-five dollars and fourteen cents. If I cross-reference that, and Jeff, you might need to chime in here, on the budget reductions that you had provided for the committee, and I know that these numbers were kind of like average salaries for, for classroom teachers. From what I can infer, and Jeff, again, you might need to speak to this, I count a total of eight classroom positions for a total of approximately five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in savings, which correlates to what would have been the percentage increase had we gotten that approved. So that seems to line up for me. When I take that five sixty away from the original proposed number, which was again nineteen million eight hundred and sixty thousand, I don't get the revised budget of eighteen million eight hundred and sixty thousand. I get a revised budget of nineteen million three hundred thousand and ninety-five dollars. So I'm just curious about the discrepancy there.
Thank you, Kara. So two-three oh five is a DESI function code for classroom teachers. Two-three oh six is a Whitman Hansen code for specialist teachers. They're really two-three oh fives. The state doesn't have a two-three oh six code. And two-three oh seven is special ed classroom specialists. The state doesn't have a two-three oh seven code. We use two-three oh five, two-three oh six, and two-three oh seven in this district because Harper's and Munis are not talking to each other. Right now, we have to hand punch our payroll in weekly. So if you add up those three lines, I think it's about two point six million. You have the eighteen eight, the four hundred and forty, and the three hundred. That's seven, that's about twenty-six, twenty-six, I'm sorry, two point six million dollars.
So two-three oh five is the one, in the district budget, two-three oh five is the one that was nineteen million eight sixty, and that is reflected here as a revised budget of eighteen million eight sixty, so approximately a million dollars. When I look at the two-three oh six, which I agree, I understand is, is a district-specific code and not Munis, that number is FY twenty-six proposed was four hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety, which looks like it's the same as the revised budget.
Okay.
And I don't see twenty-three oh seven, and that would make sense because it's special ed and we are legally mandated to cover it, that kind of as a component here. So it still seems to me that we have a, unaccounted for, or I'm unclear on approximately half a million dollars, I guess, five hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars of like that discrepancy between what was proposed, what was told to us as cuts based upon the rejected budget from the towns, and then what's now documented on this revised budget. So I just would really like to get some clarification on that, because that's also potentially a number of positions if there's a, if there's some sort of error there, which again, I'm not a finance person, but I just want to do due diligence.
Thank you.
TJ?
Just to follow up on this conversation, what did, the column on the spreadsheet that we were handed today, column, I guess, one, revised budget, what is that supposed to match? Where, where did that number come from?
Those are the numbers that are imported into Munis. That's where I receive my information is, from the financial, financial software system.
There are seven lines in the spreadsheet that do not match the Munis handout from October eighth.
You have to be, what are you, I'm not sure what you're saying.
We were handed a budget run September thirtieth at the October eighth meeting, that seven of the budget lines on the spreadsheet that we were handed today do not match, as best I can tell, between the two.
TJ, are you talking the revised budget number? Because I'm trying to follow, too.
I might, sorry, I think I'm wrong on that one. I think I was looking at the totals instead of the salaries.
Oh, okay.
I didn't, my, my apologies.
All right, thank you, TJ. If, if we... Yeah, we know that. If we don't have any more questions for now, which I'm sure we'll have money, and I'm sure you'll be sending them to me. We do have another, we do have two things. We have Rosemary's motion that we had tabled, and we also have an appointment of, for the appointments of the budget subcommittee. So.
I know you're not taking a public comment, but I do think it's a point because you're about to go to a vote. May I just make a, a comment about timing?
Sure.
More than glad to have Laura Kemet from Hanson, Chair of the Hanson Select Board. We're more than glad to have a conversation about next steps. And I agree with Brian that this is something collectively that we, we need to address. But I want to make sure people are super clear that anything we'd be talking about would be a town meeting, which the board needs to make a decision collectively about whether, our board, the Hanson Select Board, and then the Whitman Select Board would need to make collective decisions about whether that is what they want to do. And then there's posting requirements, et cetera, et cetera. And the reason I'm mentioning this is I don't want people to have false hope that this is some rabbit we can pull out of a hat and have a Christmas miracle happen this year, because it, it isn't. And I, and I'm sorry to say that, but that's just the reality of the situation. So I thought that you should acknowledge that in, in the decision that you're about to make. So.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sean.
So Sean Kane, Whitman Select Board. If you don't mind, I'd like to make a comment about Circuit Breaker, because I think you brought up a good point, both Chris and, and Ryan. In 2022, there was significant tension arose around Circuit Breaker, when at the time, it was believed by, it was Randy Lamontina and John Galvin had done a good amount of research around Circuit Breaker. And at the time, they had thought that you were kind of using Circuit Breaker sparingly and building up that account, a good chunk of that account, because at the time, we're looking to transition to full-day kindergarten. After we talked about it a number of times at the, at the school committee, the school committee actually, not officially voted, but they came to a consensus that they wanted to implement a new policy on how Circuit Breaker is used. They said that, kind of as you were saying, you kind of know what you're going to get reimbursed in one particular year, and then based on that reimburse, that reimbursed number, that known, that known number, you would then pledge that towards the additional fiscal year, the year coming. So there was no question about how much was being used, it was going to go from one to the other. It looks like over the last, well, after twenty-two, there was a couple of years where that policy was, it seemed like it was almost directly followed. But the last couple of years, it seemed to deviate from that. It looked like last year, specifically in FY twenty-five, that that number was overpledged, that more money was, was put or anticipated in the budget than you were going to receive in reimbursement. And if that's the case, you can see how that obviously would end up with a, with a deficit. So it seems like more scrutiny in that way might help you identify at least one source of potential deficit. Did you pledge too much Circuit Breaker in the following fiscal year, and did that actually come to fruition? It looks like it didn't. And if you had anticipated that in twenty-five, and then it, it was like, it looks like a million dollars short, there would be a deficit in twenty-five. And then rolling forward in twenty-six, you just said that, you know, every quarter, you're getting some money in Circuit Breaker. Did you just use some, that quarterly payment in, on September thirtieth? Did that just roll into the budget? Well, if the answer is yes, well, that's money that you otherwise would have been using for twenty-seven, digging the hole deeper. So I feel like there's something important about Circuit Breaker, like drilling into that.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, so I need, guess we need to, we should take up Rosemary, her, your motion, and I, I think it would be a good idea, Rosemary, if you repeated it again. I know, I'm sorry. I know, I'm sorry. If the committee doesn't need it, that's fine, but I just, you know, it's been a lot of numbers and a lot of information since then.
I motion, the school committee votes to temporarily pause implementation of any reduction in force actions for the period of up to 26 school days to allow for the committee to review budgetary alignment, contractual obligations, and policy compliance under Massachusetts General Law 7116B, 37, and 38N. This action is not intended to interfere with superintendent's operation obligation under Massachusetts General Law 7159, but to fulfill the committee's fiduciary statutory duty to ensure that all expenditures and personnel actions are consistent with the budget's lawfully adopted under 16B and current incumbences.
Second?
We already had a second on it. I just asked her to reread.
Out of chair, point of order, you have to take it from the table first. It was table, table.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Okay, I just wanted her to reread it before we did that. Okay, so who have a motion to take it off the table, please?
Motion to untable.
Okay, all in favor, taking it off the table? Okay, unanimous?
Do we continue the discussion from the person who motioned it?
Is there any further discussion on the motion? I know we had a couple of questions.
Just, we can shorten the time period and revote to do this, but we have to meet more regularly, so it doesn't have to be a month. It can meet the unions, 12, but we would have to be aggressive, so.
Stephanie?
I believe that when you were reading it, it said up to...so therefore, that does allow us to move at a faster pace, and I think that that would cover that situation.
All right, thank you. Kara?
I don't disagree with the spirit of this motion.
Hold on one second. Something's been said and assumed that it has no legal ground. There's a lot that, I am not an attorney, so if we have a question, if it has legal ground and that is...we can't direct the superintendent what to do, but we are in charge of our staff and compliance, and we can pause for compliance, under my understanding, but I am not the attorney. The attorney got stuck on the word "direct."
I understand, I understand.
It might have muscle, it might have bite.
I understand, and again, I am also not an attorney. But the advice that we have gotten from the attorney to date and my understanding...
It's not legally binding.
Can I finish, please? I have the floor. My understanding is, based upon training that I have received, that the responsibilities around the authority around personnel decisions regarding personnel within the district is very, very limited for the school committee. And I am not, I understand that that feels really uncomfortable, it feels really uncomfortable for me. I am comfortable, Rosemary, with your motion with a change of verbiage because, as someone said, like, this is not just like arbitrary or like a token, we don't, like, we're being told we don't have the authority legally. We are, in my mind, requesting or recommending or advising the superintendent in his role in reporting to this committee that he pause those decisions up to 26 school days in order to determine, like, clarify additional information. So I just don't want to get another call from, or for Beth to get another call from MASC, and then having to talk to the attorney, which, again, is another expense, that then only to be back in the same seat in three days, because I think that that's kind of the cycle we're in. And I, Rosemary, again, I understand the spirit of what you're proposing, and I do not, at its heart, disagree with it. I just have a problem voting on it, given the legal recommendations we've received to date.
Hillary?
Two things. If we do vote this motion, my recommendation would be to recommend that Beth send it to the attorney for clarification, just so we don't run into an issue such as we find ourselves in now. Secondly, and I've just totally lost my train of thought, oh, I know, we're not, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rosemary, your, this motion is not a directive to the superintendent.
Correct.
Okay. So in theory, based on that, he can still issue RIFs.
You would have to talk to the attorney, but there are some case law that contradicts what you're saying.
Right, and I think we can all agree that none of us sitting at this table have law degrees, which is why my suggestion would be to err on the side of caution and to check with an attorney, our attorney, who we pay for, to make sure. I think it's important that when we are talking about people's jobs and we were just given, I mean, and obviously, I feel like this happened three hours ago, but we were just given information that tells us that every pay period that we prolong this, it's costing more money and ultimately more jobs. And I don't think anybody sitting at this table or anybody sitting in this room wants that to happen. And so my concern is if we, like, we need to make sure we're doing right by all of, by the kids. And I think when you see this document that we were given tonight that says that every pay period, it's more money and that this is just the first phase, that's incredibly troubling, and my concern is, and again, with Kara, I don't disagree with the spirit, I just want to make sure that we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, and at the end of the day, doing what is right for kids. And I don't think in January, laying off more people because we did not do right now, do the right thing right now, whatever that is, checking with an attorney is going to sit well with me.
Chair, you...
I would like to see if this is, in fact, if the cuts happen today, tomorrow, whenever they happen, if they happen, if we have to do another round of cuts, I would like to see, I think to echo Ryan's point, I would like to see less of our Unit A and Unit D. I think that there are definitely places where we can cut people who are not working face-to-face, whether they are pulling kids out. Those are still people who are working face-to-face with kids. They might not be sitting in a classroom, but they're working with kids. And I think that if this is something, and it sounded like, based on Mr. Hyde's presentation, that this is something that we will be revisiting, and I would like leadership to come up with a more creative approach to making cuts that truly are not affecting our students.
Jeff, last week, when Rosemary made the motion, and Beth, I believe, started to say, "Oh, we don't have that authority," you actually said, "We do." Can you clarify exactly what our authority is in regards to this? Because my fear is, if we wait and get the attorney's opinion on this, that tomorrow, Jeff can just go and issue all his RIF notices, and then it's oops, too late. So Jeff, can you please clarify what you meant by "we can direct you"?
Well, you're my boss, so if you give me a directive, I have to follow that directive, unless it's against the law. And right now, what we have, what we've been presented by Attorney Wa is that you can't give me this directive and that. And this is why I think we need to clarify that more. You've changed the motion from a directive. Last week, it was a directive. We sat next to each other, you said, "You will." So that's that point. So when I'm given a directive, just like if I give an employee a directive, if it's lawful, they need to follow that directive, or it's insubordination. So that's when I said, "Yes, if you tell me to pause, I will pause respectfully, even though I don't think it's the right thing to do." And that's what I said after the fact.
You said something very key right there. If it's lawful, you don't have to follow it. So if it's truly unlawful, we don't have to vote it. So there's a contradiction. If it truly is against the law, what we have done, then why does the vote ever have to go? It self-nalifies. So...
It doesn't.
Then there's some question on what's lawful and what's not. It was semantics in the wording, and ultimately, the hope to correct it. Now, we can, and I would agree, go to legal, but under the directive that it is not asked in a way to undermine the committee's vote, but to support the committee's decision and vote to find opportunity to thoroughly review this budget.
Stephanie, you have something addition?
Yeah, so I'm looking at, you know, some of the line items, and the 2306, the total specialist classroom teachers, right? According to the revised budget, that number is exactly the same as the fiscal year 26 proposed budget? Are you following my two documents that I'm looking at?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm curious if somebody can get us an answer as to how, when that number did not change, we are almost employing or paying twice as much for that. So I'm concerned about that. And as a result of it being a budgetary issue, in addition to the, it does not seem like the budget that we are being given has enough information for you to move forward on a decision about this. It feels like a very knee-jerk reaction right now. And so I would like it if you could take a pause, whether we vote for this or not, to make sure all of this information is put together, meet with the budget subcommittee that we're going to be forming very quickly, and get the answers before you start handing out notices, please.
Frank, you really can't, because I'm not letting anybody else. I just let this... It's related to the motion?
Yes.
You okay with that?
I think Frank has history here. I think he can give us...
I know he does, but I just didn't want to make a present.
I might disagree sometimes with it, but he has knowledge.
As a former town administrator, I have no representation here at all, but I'd like to make a suggestion to the committee. The superintendent works for the committee. He works under the direction of the committee. It would be political suicide to ignore the committee. So may I suggest that you make a motion substantially that says, notwithstanding the respective authorities of the school committee and superintendent of schools, the superintendent is asked to delay any reduction in force prior to a certain date to allow for an opportunity to review the current financial condition of the school district.
I like that.
I think that's worded very well. Can you repeat that as if you're me again?
Since someone's typing it, notwithstanding...
Chair...
I think one of us needs to make the motion ourselves.
Here.
Okay, this is getting confusing because we're allowing people who are not supposed to be speaking to our motions getting up and speaking to a new motion, okay? And no offense, Frank. So, I mean, I am really getting a little overwhelmed here. Cindy wanted to say something for the union, so I would really kind of like to hear from the union heads here to, before we do anything more, please.
I'm going to try to say this with all due respect, but I'm here on behalf of the membership that sits here and everybody that's at home. While you guys all figure out your shit, you need to let the people that are going to get laid off know so that they can move on with their lives and have a plan, because there are jobs out there that they can attack and get before the holidays. You need to let them know. You figure it out, and if you let them know and you fix it, you can bring them all back. Let them know by name tomorrow so they can decide whether they want to stay, because if you don't, you're going to lose more people on top of it. So fix it.
It was also said, too, right, this magnifies, so we're delaying the inevitable. One thing, too, if you could ask the superintendent to make those decisions as far as the information of staff, I'd respect and appreciate that you would do that.
I was going to go forward no matter what with the conversation, even if there wasn't the reduction in force, to let people know, based upon your ask at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you. Just for clarification, the reduction in force letters are just what you're asking for. You're asking for the RIFs.
We don't want to see anybody cut, but we need, people have been asking us to, they need to know so they can make plans. So yes, anybody that was on the RIF list would like to know who they are because they're abiding by the contract by not letting names out, and they're honoring the contract, which we understand and we respect, but they need to be able to move forward with their lives because if they want to make the decision to leave and find another job in another district where there are postings, they have the right to do that professionally.
And...
Just, if I could, just to echo on that, too, so it's not just the, okay, the reduction in force piece, okay, you're losing your job, but there's also the transfer situation, right? There's the bumping piece that you're familiar with, all that stuff, too.
And, you know, personally, that's why I really don't want to put any longer time on this, you know? So I have a problem with not sending out RIF letters and sending them out because I think it's only fear to let people go get another job if they can.
The longer you wait to do this, you're messing with everybody in here.
That's right. And it'll add to the numbers, so I'm just saying straight out that I will, unfortunately, and it's no offense to you guys, that I would not vote for this. What I would vote for is that before there's any more, that we have all these budget meetings, and then we look at everything before there's any more after this. But for right now, I think it's only fear to the people who work here, that we give them the opportunity to find work elsewhere or whatever, and then if we can fix things and call people back, that would be great. I mean, I think that we would all, you know, look forward to that, but I don't think right now it's fair to say, 24 days, December 17th, to find a job when, you know, Cindy's alluding to the fact that there are some out there right now. I, you know, I just will tell you right now, if it's Frank's or anybody's, you know, I guess maybe I might be the only one voting against it, but I will tell you right now, I just, my heart is breaking that if we keep these people on tender hooks any longer, it's not fair. This whole thing is not fair. It's not fair. And, you know, for anybody to think that any of us did this maliciously, it's not, so.
Is it possible to issue notifications but not have it take place within a week's time period? So that we have, they, so they have the right to actually look for another job in the meantime, and they have time to look for another job. And at the same time, we're, yes, that's 60% more than we would be paying if we'd have to pay 40% of unemployment, but still, it would give them time, but it gives us time to also look at the books and figure out if we can move line items, if we can cut elsewhere, if somebody's not including all of the information that we need to include. So can we do that, Jeff?
Yes, so a couple of things. I'll honor that conversation. What we had planned anyway, as far as reduction in force, letters would be going out on the 14th. anyway, as far as reduction enforced, letters would be going out on the 14th, and their last day of work would be the 21st. But if I have till Monday to get that list together, because it has changed, based upon the second pay period, I can get that out to, well, we can meet to see how we distribute that, okay? With transfers, and with people that potentially would be losing their job.
Fair. Thank you.
Cara?
I actually had Stephanie's question about the timing for the RIF notices versus the end of employment, so thank you.
All right, so, I have the old motion first, and we have to do something with that, and then if you're interested in taking out Frank's, who is not a member of the committee. I mean, it's, it's up to you. So, what do we do with, we have Rosemary's first, so what, what's your, what is your pleasure?
We are definitely caught between two different things. I would like everybody to remember 2019, when we had, when we laid off a lot of teachers, and ultimately, had money in the budget, at the end. I don't want to see that again. I don't want to send out RIF notices for people that, you know, people that don't, that could possibly still be employed, or have the panic, so.
So, what do we want to do with your motion, Rose?
I would like to take up Frank's, and do aggressive work on this committee, and meet that...
So, do you want to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. So, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of withdrawing, allowing her to withdraw the motion. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, now we have Frank's motion.
Somebody else?
Wait a minute. Stephanie?
Do, do we need Frank's motion, if Jeff is willing to issue the RIFs, and just give a prolonged termination date, so that we have time to look at this? It just seems like he's, he's willing to play ball. I'm not sure we need to issue any mandate-type things here.
You're putting me in a very difficult situation.
Yep.
Following the, trying to follow the law, and now you're flip-flopping on to say what needs to be done.
I'm not flip-flopping, I'm asking a question. I just don't know what the procedure is.
We have a deficit right now that I have to aggressively attack.
So you need...
George, do you want to speak?
Couldn't we have a conversation with people that were impacted at either the stoppage point last week, or the potential for November, and not actually physically give it to them, just saying, at this point in time, you were on a list for a possible reduction. That's not a RIF. That's the saying, hey, I'm trying to help you out with this situation, and we're trying to be kind, and allow this situation to happen.
Well, I think that's what they just, we just asked, about doing it.
I don't know if it's...
I don't think it does.
Right. I'm willing to have that conversation, and not issue the letter until, at least another meeting. But we can have the conversation with the people that were on the lists for transfers, and for reduction enforced, prior to that, as of Monday.
Ryan?
I just have a question, and this is for the, the union. If they're not given an actual RIF, are they, are they allowed to, if they're notified that they are, that they're on a list to be riffed, is that, is that enough for them to be able to apply for a job that is open now, or are they still bound by the contract they have now? No?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then that's, I just want to make sure that was, wasn't limiting.
Just a point of clarification as well, this would be a violation of the contract, having a conversation with someone prior to that. So I just need to know we are in agreement with that, so that I'm not gonna get a grievance later. That you're asking me to notify people of a potential RIF, not a real RIF, and letting them know, which is a violation of the contract. So, we have a gentleman, you know, I mean, we can have a conversation, I just want to make sure I'm not setting up someone else out there to bring it to you, to say, in the Unit A contract, on page 32, under RIFs, yeah, I'm supposed to get a letter, I'm supposed to be giving notice, we are forewarning you that potentially, your job may be in danger, as a human thing, and this is the conversation we had, folks, with the association two weeks ago. I more than wanted to let you know, but before we had information here, I couldn't, because of the contract. But that's where I want just clarification. Okay.
Okay. Okay, yes, Chris?
I, that kind of asked my question, but I guess my question for the both of you is, is, would you consider this a satisfactory, for now, resolution to the situation that we're in?
Yeah, we don't want to be one of the different parts, but there's no good thing to do, so somebody else would get it. I want to assist, or what can you do, assisting, helping out, helping more professional, so making our jobs, it's a good idea.
Stephanie?
I think that it makes sense, since Jeff is under the gun here, as far as being in between a rock and a hard place. I think we do need to make that motion, that was recommended by Mr. Lynam. And I am also going to request that Whitman-Hanson Education Association put in writing their request for Jeff, and after meeting with the membership, if you need to meet with them again, or whatever. But just because you are speaking for them, I do want to make sure he's not in any more hot water than he actually already is. So, I, I'm not saying you would, I'm just, I'm just asking for, I, as a real estate agent, I believe in everything in writing, please?
And they're also on camera, so, they got them.
That, that's true, but still. But can, can we make the motion, or, I don't know who has the paper. Ryan?
Go ahead. I think my only concern with the motion, which is lovely, is the time period. I, that's my only concern, is the time constraint with it. And I, I don't know, like, what George just said, do we need a motion, or are we all grown-ups, sitting at the table, who just had a conversation about how we would like to see this play out? I guess that's my question, because I feel like, if we, if we make a motion and say, by such-and-such a date, we are perhaps making the problem bigger than it will be. I guess I'm just confused about that, that's all.
That's, that's the "up to" portion of the, you know, of the terminology, is up to 26 school days, not being 26 school days. So, it's the "up to."
Well, that's, that's not actually what his motion says, because his motion, the way the word is, is, asks a delay, any reduction enforced prior to, and then there's a spot for a date. So I think that...
There's no motion on the floor.
Right, there's no motion on the floor, right, exactly.
Right now, we don't have a motion, so I...
I motion, we motion?
I, I think I don't need a motion. I think I know the general consensus of the association, and of this board, right now. I'm comfortable with that. Last week, I was not comfortable. I'm comfortable now. Last week was a directive, this week was a conversation, a professional conversation, which we agreed to with the association.
I'd like...
Rosemary?
I think the part of the motion that's most important, is that we're reviewing things, that we have documents, and we can thoroughly review things. And I think that that motion has satisfied that, that teachers will, will, will know their course of action, what's going to happen. But, that motion is that we're going to have the documents to be able to review, to ensure that everything is in compliance. So I think when we not, we don't make this motion, we're sort of, we're leaving everybody.
Well, I would hope, Rosemary, that after all of this...
It's not hope anymore. It's not hope anymore, baby.
Well, I think that we need to be more aware, and follow up, and get more information. I think it goes without saying, I, you know, I don't even, you know, I don't think we need a motion for that. I think we better do it, is my opinion.
I think I've learned that we need motions, and serious directives to get things done, or they don't get done.
Can I make a motion to form a budget subcommittee, that will meet within the next week, to start the initial process of reviewing all of these financial figures?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
I think someone said we need timelines.
I just said in my motion, for the budget subcommittee to meet within the next week.
And, okay, so now I would like some volunteers to be on the budget subcommittee, please.
I volunteer?
Yes.
I just was clarifying, we want somebody from Hanson and from Whitman.
So I have TJ, Rosemary, and Ryan. Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great.
Just a point of clarification, subcommittees do not take votes. Subcommittees look at things, and bring recommendations to the full committee to take votes. So, I just, I'm not saying this for anybody on our committee, I'm saying this for the general audience for that, so.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.